All right, hello everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. The Tuesday, April 3rd, 2024 Ways and Means Budget Discussion Meeting. Here at City Hall Meeting Room, second floor and Zoom. This meeting is being recorded by the Ways and Means Committee and GCTV9. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. All right, I don't see anybody. So let's do a roll call of the members. Well, I'll just go down there. Councilor Tronzo, hey, I'm here, yay. Counselor Garrett, here. Counselor Master Satero.
Yeah.
Counselor Wondolowski. Maybe coming. Counselor Perry.
Present.
All right. We have no approval of minutes. We're gonna have a... We invited the mayor to give a fully brief, relatively brief, presentation of the FY 2025 operating budget.
Well, it'll be brief, okay? This is a very challenging fiscal year. I think if you have your budget book and you go to page 17, so look at the recap sheet, that will give you a little bit of an overview of where we are. We were very challenged this year because the debt service increased significantly. Indeed, we do have to pay for all those wonderful things that we just built. And that increased the debt service by about a million dollars. And our health insurance rates went up 17%. You're not gonna see that actually on this particular page, that's on another page. But I want you to keep open to this for just a minute, so you'll see. So, so health insurance was up 17%. And we're still actually negotiating with some of the unions on that. The figure that we put in the budget book was a little less than the million that I think it may be. So we may still be looking for another $400,000 after we end these budget meetings. But we really were up against it. Every year, for those of you who are new to the budget, I'm just gonna show you this. Mike, Councilor Tronzo's already been on this with me. But some of you are new to budgeting. Wherever we are one year, we can only go up so much. And I did this for department heads because it didn't help everybody. But every year, you can only go up, I'm sorry, I don't have one of those things. Every year, you can only go up two and a half percent from what you were the last year. For us, every year, that means, like last year was $900,000. This year, it was a little bit over a million. Plus, we can add our new growth. That's things that we find from buildings that are new buildings that are built, additions. Everybody can help with that by, you can call the building inspector. If you see somebody putting an addition on the house, maybe, and you don't see a building permit there. That new growth is key, is added to the tax base every year, and it never goes away. But that's actually all that we can go up with, about a million and a half. So that, if you keep that in the back of your mind, you'll see why I'm saying to you, this was a really tough year for us. Because before we even got to contractual obligations with, you know, raises that we've promised people, we were already up against it with two factors. Health insurance and the debt. Contributory retirement, and we want everybody to have a great retirement, was up $420,000. So, as I said, it was a tough budget year. If you look to the bottom of page 17 on the right-hand column, you can see that we had to use funds to balance this year's budget that we actually have never done. Put in $200,000 from OPEB stabilization, which is twice as much as we should ever put in. We usually put in $100,000. From our pension stabilization, we supplemented with $421,243. And from free cash, we put $200,000 towards balancing the budget. So, a couple of points that I wanted to make. We made very, very few additions as far as jobs throughout the city. I put that in the opening remarks. It's the revenue stream that we really, really need. We added a position in assessing. We added a half of position, a half of, like a half person, which there's no such thing as a half person. But a half a position in a grant writer that's over in economic development. That individual had a half-time position, and I moved her to become a full-time position. Because of the infrastructure bond bill and the housing bond bill, if we can get those money, that money in grants, it would be, you know, fabulous. So we added a couple of people there. And hoping that that will increase that revenue stream. Additionally, we put, I think, a part-time position was added to the library, although they had asked for four. They, you know, desperately needed that, we gave them one. We added one position in to the fire department. And that actually does not show up on your budget. That shows up on the revolving fund, which I can show you after. We, there will be one more police officer instead of adding an extra lieutenant to keep a police officer downtown, which the chief will talk about. We were adding an extra position there, and there has been a downtown presence, which has been very, very necessary of late. So we added only a few things there. And I wanted to show you your one other page in this, and that is your revolving fund. And that is on page 42. Revenue from revolving funds. I know a lot of this, some of this is familiar to some of you, and some of it is not. So some of the revolving funds, they all have different rules. Some of them close to the general fund. Some of the balances are available for expenditure. But you will see on the ambulance service that the ambulance service their spending limit was increased to $326,880. I actually don't have in front of me what it was last year, but I think it was around 260. So we added that extra personnel through that revolving fund. So we didn't make any other changes to that. And
That's the fire.
That's the fire. That's where we're, that's where, yeah, that's where that person was added. And additionally, we spent a lot of time, I'd like to compliment Matt Conway and Angelica Deroches for what they did in the budget book this year. This was an after. It was a labor of love they put into, this is a very different format that you've seen in the past. So you can actually see the number of FTEs and the changes that are from one department to the other. So we concentrated more on the facts that we thought that you would want to have, as opposed to, I mean, there are lovely pictures on there. But that wasn't the focus. The focus was the facts. And so those are the highlights. And Counselor Tronzo said to keep that brief. So that's, that's my overview. Any questions as we go along? More than happy to answer them. And if there are any departments that, department heads were not here as we go on to one thing or another, I said if they're not here, I'd help them by speaking to them. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that we also see kind of previous years and the graphs are
Yes.
help make it clear where we are this year.
Line items. I was a bad lot.
Thank you.
Well, for you, what was the biggest surprise? As you came in, and so I know you saw it from the city council side, but from the mayor's seat, what was your biggest surprise or anything that caught you off guard or just made you think, wow?
It was the benefits. It's horrifying to me to see, to see that we can actually just go up a million four. And that is what it's going to continue to be. And we really are struggling. I struggled because I believe in every department that's here. And people came forward with things that they wanted, and I had to say no. I had to make a reduction in the school budget. And that was very difficult for me, you know, personally. But it was hard for everybody that wanted somebody else. But I see no other options unless we increase our revenue. Because we're gonna be up against that every year. The debt this year and next year, the hit that that takes to the budget is huge. Next, this year, our contributory retirement is up $420,000. Next year, I think it's up $480,000. And just with the insurances and the debt, without even raises. And we all know that the cost of everything is going up. So the other thing is to actually be in here and see how hard everyone works is incredible. People, they work from dawn till dusk, they don't have time for lunch, et cetera, et cetera. I'm very, very impressed with the people that work for the city. But they should be, you know, well compensated. And that, it was really tough to be facing that in light of what you can pay everyone. Thanks for that question, Wendy Stopp.
Any questions?
I got a quick question of the cherry sheet and the governor's budget in the House, Senate, and the conference committee. I've never sat in the seat before, and I'm curious into how close does it usually land as far as the aid coming from the state? Is it, is this the sum of the House, you know, like, you know?
It's generally close. And I've seen the original cherry sheets, and then I saw the Senate has come in.
Okay.
Okay, and that was lower. I think that was like $50,000 lower, if I remember correctly. I looked at it, and I was like, oh no. Because usually the governor's budget comes out, and anybody correct me if I'm wrong. Some of you have done this for longer than me. So, and I don't mind, I don't mind that I don't know things, and I don't mind corrections. But as I recall, you generally have a higher figure coming from Ways and Means. And I took a look at that, and I went, oh no. But realistically, I'm glad that I live in this state. And this state just spent an extra billion dollars that it wasn't, it wasn't thinking that it was gonna be spending. And so we have seen cuts to social services that we didn't think that we would have. I had a, I won't name the group. But I had a group from a social service agency that's near and dear to our hearts. They came in just this past week and was asking for funding for that group because they're afraid that their half-time staff person who does so much for marginalized people here, their funding was cut. And I thought that is probably the fallout, in my opinion, from what's happening with that, you know, raising financial obligations that's based on the state level. So I think that's serious. So what happens is, you get the cherry sheets, you see what the governor comes out with, then the Senate, and then the House, and then there's usually a mix of the three. But usually, you know, usually the first that you get, you're hoping for better than that. And it usually, am I correct, Superintendent?
I think so.
Yeah, that generally it's, yeah, it comes a little higher on the, when they're all done with the three, it usually comes out higher than the third one. And this year, I looked at it, and I was like, oh no. So that was a little, so I don't mean to be a picture of doom and gloom. I thought we put our, we put the city planned well. That's one thing to take away from this. We had money in stabilizations. We, that was something else I brought for those of you who didn't know this. I didn't send you a printout of that because I didn't think of it until we were here today. But I do want to tell you what we have in stabilizations. And because we had that money that we thought ahead, and I would like to thank Liz Gilman, who was the former finance director. Because we actually had that pension stabilization, we had a way out this year. She had created that for that very reason, for the years when we were up against it with the debt. But these balances were probably as of about a month ago, but I'll just run them off. Free cash was $340,000. And we took, you know, we took $200,000 and put that to excel, you know, balancing the budget. Our general stabilization is, and this is about where it should be, is $2,270,832. Our capital stabilization, after everything that Ways and Means voted for, after all of those orders, is $2,337,808. And the pension stabilization was $1,057,730,000. But that is now minus that figure of 420. So that's probably, we'll just say about $600,000. And then we have a couple of other, the opioid stabilization, which is just to be used for helping those affected by the great crisis. So covered that.
All right, anything else? Any questions?
I know nonprofit budgeting, which is often a wing and a prayer. Like you, you're like, we're gonna raise this much money, and hopefully we can do that. It's based on past history. So I know there's growth in your revenue side. And what is that predicated on? And how confident you are? You know, I know it's, you're looking at the assessments and being able to do that better, as well as the grant writing. Am I getting that right? And is there anything else that?
So when you do like the whole recap sheet, and you're making this estimate to make the budget, you look at, you know, what the revenues are. And we, I, this is one of the places I looked. I said, we, we have to find this. Let's look at the, let's look at the revenue stream and make sure that we are projecting actually where we are. So I haven't gotten the, they're probably, they're probably finished now. I haven't gotten the three-quarter mark for where we are in revenues. But we put in, in the recap, a little bit higher estimate on revenues because some of us are, you know, we're up on meals tax, and we're up on hotel, hotel tax at the half mark.
Okay.
Not at the three-quarter mark. So our building, you know, building permits were up, that's good.
Yeah.
That means that there's more things that are being built. And just also, we're having an ad hoc committee starting this week on new growth, where I'm pulling everybody together that has anything to do with new growth. This is something that nobody's had a meeting of before. But I'm getting, you know, the Eric Tora, who's in charge of planning, and Mark Smell, who does all, you know, he's in charge of the building permits and economic development. They're coming, and everybody in the Economic Development Office, the assessors. And we're gonna make sure that there's not an iota of new growth that we are not capturing. Because that is something that you add to the tax base that never goes away. And we cannot afford to do that. So I haven't sent that email out to everyone yet. Those of you who are out there, TV man, too, you're sending that out. As a matter of fact, it's a draft form, but I was waiting for one person's email because I thought it is great, it is wonderful that we do the special permitting and get a, you know, like a marijuana cultivator to come here. But if we don't get the new growth that goes along with that, it, you know, it's not helping us year after year after year. So we can't afford to miss one of those. So everybody's gonna come, and everybody will have a little homework. And that email is in draft form. So we will do our best on that. And that is why I added that, you know, the grant writing position and another person in assessing. And also out of, we had a little left in our, I have somebody that we're just gonna call in for, I don't know how you say it the correct way. It would be like a one-time thing, that they are just going through all of the businesses to, or commercial properties, to look for personal property, because some of that had not been done for quite a while. And that is for new growth. If you look on that DLS webpage, you'll see that personal property is often a big part of what municipalities capture for new growth. And so eyeball is not to miss a penny.
Thank you, Mayor.
Another thing to point out, kind of coincides with what we discussed. I know it's only three weeks difference, but one of the precipitating factors of moving the vote for the operating budget to give more time was, the mayor just reminded me, was having those three-quarter stats come out. Whereas before, we would get them pretty much when it was moved. But we will have, you know, that extra period of time going forward. If all of those changes are approved by the state with the charter change, by giving the mayor's office another three weeks to submit their full budget, will be helpful in getting a more accurate picture and not having to rely on second quarter numbers. Not this year, but hopefully future years, maybe, maybe by next year. Yeah. All right, well, if anyone else got questions here, then I will open this up to public comments. We don't want anybody signed up here, but so, all right.
I didn't see that
Gotcha.
when I came in.
My fault for not pointing you out. Does anybody on Zoom want to do public comment? You could put your name in the chat, and you can follow after our singular in-person. I'd say contestant, but
Do I win The Price is Right tonight?
It's not real fortune.
I mean, it's Ways and Means, so Price is Right might have been
All right. Well, I don't see anybody out there raising their hand, so here, and come on up if you'd like. Or have
The right page.
Sorry, what?
Did you have the right page on the little monitor?
Yeah, there's no chat. There's nobody in the chat.
Do I need to like, is it like a microphone or just?
If you want to pull a chair up there, you can. I'm gonna pull it around.
I feel a little bit like I'm on stage. Be nervous.
Don't be nervous.
We just need your name and where you live.
I'm here in Anhalt, and I live 111 Beacon Street. So, hang on, okay. So I'm here again talking about the importance of the education in Greenfield and investing in our children. First and foremost, I want to thank the school committee and the superintendent for all their hard work in creating a budget and doing that work, allocating money in a system that has dwindling revenue. I know it is very difficult. I watched Ginny and the Ways and Means Committee go through it last year. I know how hard it is. I don't envy anyone that job. That being said, I have some concerns with the way the budget is put together. And I think that it is appropriate at this point to, for the Ways and Means Committee, to reject the budget in its current form, because we need a more detailed budget, understanding where things are line item, with much greater awareness of where the money is going and how it is being spent. I was very troubled by the hiring of the new assistant superintendent, especially knowing that there were going to be budget cuts this year. And I feel like that was a frustrating decision as a parent. Because when I am looking at where I want to send my children to school, I am not looking for bloated administration. I am looking for a strong arts program. Currently, the band and music program is almost non-existent at the high school and the middle school. It is struggling, to say the least. There is no chorus, there's no music theory. None of those things exist at this point in time. The elementary school music program is the same. Investing in a curriculum coordinator and an assistant superintendent at a small district is unwise and unprecedented in most of the surrounding school districts. I think, I understand that the hire has been made, that that is all done. I get that, but I want to see more clarity in the budget because I feel like we don't have enough of an understanding of where things are going. And as a taxpayer, as a parent who's looking, what are the best ways to spend money for our kids? How are we best investing in these children? We need to make sure that we can see all of that clearly. I want to see line items for things like band and music and art. And currently, that is just not in the budget. I would encourage the Ways and Means Committee to request that the budget be broken down in a more accessible way, so that we can see where the money is headed. And once again, encourage the administration to recognize that as parents, we don't care about the administration nearly as much as we care about the quality of education. And I do not believe an assistant superintendent is going to improve the quality of education. Surrounding school districts are not losing children at the same rate that we are. They are losing children, not at the same rate. And they do not have this position at those schools. I'm very disappointed with the way that the budget is presented by the school district. And again, I know that everybody on the administration team is doing their best and fully invested in these kids. I hope you guys aren't taking it any other way because I know that you are fully invested. And maybe we have different ideas where things should be going, and that is fine. But I do think that the clarity in the budget is critically important so that we as a community can better understand where the money is going and how we can better make ends meet, and where we as parents can help step in to fill in some of these gaps. That is my comment for the evening. Thank you.
That was very easy, see?
I'm a pro. Okay, most people do know.
Thank you.
Good luck, everybody, thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call. Going once, going twice. All right, public comments closed. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no motions. I would invite, we'll start with the schools. So Frank, can I tech? If there's anything you'd like to present for us, it'd be helpful.
Can I pull up Jits?
Very cozy here.
Can I share my screen real quick? Volume, I'm not gonna turn the volume. You can hear me. This is a budget book you're gonna get in two different forms, one hard copy, one electronic. The electronic copy is pretty easy. The goal of today is just to kind of show you where Greenfield is, and there are certain numbers of students, the trends, and where we are in the budget process. So the budget book does come with a table of contents, which if you click on, you can start with your sources of funding. That's what I would recommend anyone in the community to start. And that will kind of take you to this sheet right here. And this is the sources and uses of funding. I'll go through this pretty quickly so you can see trends over the last five years. We have the assessment to the towns. As you can see, annually, it's gone up about a 3% rate. If that didn't change for this next coming year. If you needed more clarification for the assessment to town, what it involves, you just click on anything highlighted in blue, and it will take you to a narrative. And then where we got that information, it will also take you to an external narrative to the Department of Ed. But I'll go back to the top left and click on sources of funding. And let's talk about the assessment to towns per pupil, and we'll highlight Greenfield here. So I click on this next one right here, assessment to towns. It will take you to the sheet. Let me shrink the screen. Or just do a full view here. Just get rid of the, you know, I'm just getting rid of this right here. There you go. So assessment to the towns, right now, we have Greenfield. Wait here, hold a second. This is the one I wanted, sorry. That was the Buckman Shelvin meeting. This is the Greenfield one. And we'll go right to And we'll go right to that again. Go to assessment town per pupil, and we have Greenfield here. So Greenfield, as you can see, it's 132 students. And the assessment is 1.293 million. And the average per pupil is 9,798, which is below our average of our 19-member towns of 12,252. When we look at a trend for Greenfield, we look at this, let me get to the trend here. And we go right to the trend here, the Greenfield. And the trend is, it should be right the next one. And here we go. So you can see this trend in 123, 122, 117, and 132 over the last four years. And when we look at where it kind of goes from here, if I go to sources of funding, if I just click on this, it's not getting there for some reason. It's a glitch in what's going on here in the budget, but let me try to get to it here. There we go. So you can see the last 10 years in the town of Greenfield with the enrollment and it variations of that enrollment. We are projecting, I like to give everybody a one-year's notice, what we project for next year. We currently have about 32 graduates. We have 25 or so incoming that are going to be coming next year. So when you do that math, we are expecting 125 from Greenfield for next year. And for this year, it's 132. So you're getting back to where you've kind of been trending over the last five years, and I expect that to be rather consistent. And when I get back up to the, to the sources of funding, forgive me why I have to scroll over here manually, just by the way that it, it's, it's not loading here. So I'll go right to the sources of funding again. And that's right up here. Just scroll right through. So here we go. We're looking at the debt service, which is our windows and doors project, which we had about eight years ago. It's our windows, doors, paving, and new roof project that we went out. So the debt service for Greenfield, if I go to the chart and click on that, and Greenfield right here, I'll highlight it for you. And that's $48,681. That doesn't fluctuate more than $500 on the equalized valuation every two years. So you're not going to see that fluctuate greatly during that timeframe. And then we have, going back up to the sources of funding, if it takes me there, it's a little bit of a glitch here. Yeah, did. A chapter 78. Now, we all talked about that earlier. That's kind of the big one. As you can see how we've been trending with chapter 78, it's gone up about $500, $600,000 every single year. Up until this year, we got a $17,000 bump, even though our enrollment went up 11 students. And I dug a little bit deeper, and as soon as we got that on day one, I called Rob O'Donnell from the finance at the state. And so we're trying to figure out what went wrong. And if they changed how they calculated things, would hold harmless and things like that. So, you know, we're starting from ground zero back in hold harmless, even though we have an increase of 11 students. When I look at the DOR cherry sheet and I click on that link, you can see this is where our money comes from. That will be represented in the budget. It's an easy link to follow, so anyone in the community can just click down this link down here in the blue, and it will take you to an external D S, D O R cherry sheet. And it's easy to find for any school you're looking at, for all regional schools. I go down to Franklin County Tech, and I just click on here. I click submit, and it will take us right to the figures we were looking at. So here we are with what we have had in our budget right there. So it's kind of transparent on that end of it. You get an opportunity to see where the chapter 70 money in the regional transportation. Now, we took a little bit of a hit, as you could probably see in that regional transportation line item. When you look at that cherry sheet one more time, the hit that we took was in the regional transportation line item. We went down from 917 to 855, even though our population increased and we'll have to add a bus. So that's the things that we're all kind of grappling with. And I'm going to show you how we kind of made up for that if we could. I go back to the sources of funding here at the top. And again, anything in blue, you just click on and you can get more information on. You can see the state aid transportation. Here's our trends right here. And it shows an increase because that's a number that we received back a year ago. And our end in our July number, when the governor was done with the numbers, was 917. So we started off, we generally start off minimum with the governor's numbers in July, and then we see the first numbers come in higher than that. This was 917 down to 855. So that was a little bit of a hit. So to make up for it, we do have non-member students that come to our, that do come to our school, that pay a significantly higher tuition rate, upwards of $25,000 per pupil because they're not a member of the town. I mean, they're not a member of our regional agreement. So we took 35 of those students, and that calculated to an increase, you can see here, for $752,000. And if you wanted more information about how that gets done, you just click on the highlighted blue, takes you to a narrative right here, explains non-member towns, then takes you to an external link with the Department of Ed so you can gauge whether we're doing it correctly or not. And then I go back to the sources of funding. And tuition from our free employment program, which is a self-contained specialized program, really offered at a much lower rate than you could get at a like facility is, we just don't have any extra kids that are coming in, so we can't take any funding from that. Then we have the other revenues and then the excess and deficiencies. And so that gets us to how we got our money, and I'll do a quick overview on how we spent it. We had a slight increase in administration because we added an evening school program as well for our adult education program. That's a new career technical institute program. And a lot of that the following year was occupied through a grant of about $1.2 million. And we were able to provide that program for the community for our adults. Instructional services may have looked like it's gone down $200,000, but when we reallocated everything, the big concern everyone struggles with is with the ESSR money. And when that ESSR money stopped, we had about two or three positions that were in the ESSR money that we moved into the operating budget with a long-term plan to get rid of that. That was our SRO, who will now go into the COPS grant when we receive that, and our school adjustment council will go on into Title I. So it looks like a drop, but it really isn't. And that, you'll see here, instructional services has explained how that all happens. So again, if you can't sleep at night, there's plenty of reading to do with this budget and a lot of details. So when we look at that part of it and we go into our grants, that's where I think it's new this year with our budget than it was in previous years. So when we look at our grant allocations, we've got an important issue here. Because ESSR is coming to a close, we want to make sure that the community was well aware how we spent all our money, how we spent our entitlement money and how we spent our competitive grant money. So when we look at the Perkins Grant, that's an entitlement grant for vocational technical schools. We needed some equipment related to our vocational shops. It explains how we spent it there. Our Title 28, Title IV, our ESSR grants, I'm going to kind of rush through this just so that I, you know, you can get the idea. Again, you can read a lot of this when you receive it. When we received the first round of the ESSR money in 2020, here's what we spent it on. It's right there in front of you, so you get an idea, and then there's a quick explanation. And then our second round, this is what we spent it on. And then our third round, a little bit bigger. Now, we don't get as much as comprehensive school just because we're only grades nine through 12, and that's based on population, but here's what we spent it on. And you see, so far, we're not really tied up in salaries because we were thinking this is going to come to a close. We needed a plan ahead. Then our ESSR III money came around, and you'll see our school adjustment council that I talked about and our SRO with the plan and how, and the plan's already narrated. You'll see that in when you read the article here. And then how we spent that money, which is $845,000. And so we're not in bad shape because it expired, because we were kind of already planning for that. But the biggest, and here's all our entitlement grants. So anything you need to know more about our entitlement grants over the last five years, you'll see right here, how we were allocated. If you need, I won't click on the blue link. That just takes you to more information and narratives about it. But that gives you an idea of where we were. And now, if you wanted to look at our competitive grants. So we got involved with competitive grants coming from various types of sources, from the state to the feds and from local. And in two, we started in 2014 with these competitive grants, and then 2023. These are the grants that aren't available to all of, to all the schools. You've got to kind of fight for these. And we accumulated over $9 million during that timeframe, which is why we're able to do a veterinary science clinic building, a new aviation hangar that is now up and should be, you know, we should be able to start that program in the fall. So all of these things were outside of the, you know, the operating budget, per se. So when I look back, the other ways that we spent our money, and we heard about insurance going up, that's in here too. That's, again, not going to satisfy the increase that we have down in here. So we'll, we'll probably be having to go back to our school committee to relook at that and reallocate that money. And then everything else with the benefits of pretty much exists. The biggest line in our budget is right here. You'll see the biggest change is this numbers 10 and 11 is we had the asset, we had the asset acquisition project 15 years ago. That was new boilers, HVAC units, whole revamping up, how we were doing things through a performance contract. Well, that came to an end, and we predicted it might come to an end. Well, we knew it was coming to an end right here, 517. But we also, at the same point, have been investing right now hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to keep our electrical system up. Building interior-wise is just can't sustain itself. So we're throwing away money. So we applied for the MSBA building project. We're currently in the feasibility study process. So instead of going out to bond to our towns for another 15-year or long-term bond, we took the money from the asset acquisition, rolled it into capital stabilization. And that's why you see the increase in '24 and '25. That way, we don't have to go out to bond to pay for $1.5 million feasibility study and have the town people have to burden the interest for a 15-year bond, and they have to go out twice, once for the feasibility and then once for the project. So right now, we're in the beginning phases of the feasibility study. So we'll see how that comes about. We haven't even hired an OPM. We have no idea about costs at this particular point. But I guarantee by this time next year, we will be able to articulate those costs. So that's pretty much how we spent our money. All the line items in the budget are identified as far as, this is all the narratives to help you kind of explain, but the line items are all right here in the various departments. And you can kind of look through and see what the salaries are, the trends, the increases, the reductions, and all that stuff. So that's my presentation. I'm trying to be brief about it. Sorry about going so long, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
I'm interested, I saw that the S R III round, as opposed to the first couple, were more heavily put onto salaries that got brought back into the general.
No, see, basically, we had our school, our school adjustment counselor already tied up in a special 240 grant. We just moved that out of the grant to make room for some of the paraprofessionals at first. So we kind of moved that off. Now we're moving it back in.
Okay, and same thing with the other departments, because there was other things in there with the.
There was the vocational para.
That's Spanish and something.
Spanish, we eliminated because there's no room in the master schedule for that. So that was something that we had to get rid of. So we made those adjustments so we wouldn't be stuck with trying to find all these positions when the ESSR money ran out. Should I stop sharing my screen? So, okay?
That's fine.
All right.
Was the night program a success?
Is it? What's going on right now? It's going well. I mean, it's always a success when you get a grant and adult students that are in need of that type of training don't have to pay for it. Where the rubber meets the road is when the state starts giving that money, then how successful can we be when we're now asking adult students to pay for the program? And that's kind of why it's, it is a success right now. But when that grant, I always predict, and I hope I'm wrong, that these grants will expire at some point. And you've got to plan for it.
And you feel the SROs are worthy of your expense?
Absolutely. Yeah.
I just appreciate the hyperlinks and all the narratives and just kind of the clarity. You know, as somebody, again, who's new to the budgeting process, it's helpful to see where all these various pieces are. So thank you for taking that.
Quick thing, I mean, you could probably spend hours going through all the external links and just kind of figure out, because you can learn a lot from the budget. I learned a lot every time I put it together.
Yeah, I just really appreciate the organization.
Thank you.
As a new council member, just wanted to ask, because it wasn't quite clear to me, what, what's the amount that's coming from Greenfield that goes to Franklin Tech? And is that just based on a percentage or?
Based on the number of students. So it's just all based on per pupil, so 9,917, that range per pupil, times the number of students that are coming in. That will fluctuate. Some years, you won't have as much. Like next year, we can already tell, we're not going to have as many students coming from Greenfield as we had this past year.
Okay.
So that will reduce it for the following year. So you'll see this kind of edge and flows.
Okay, so from our end, that's a formula that's baked in. It can't give you more money or take money. It's.
The state will tell us what that per pupil amount is for the town of Greenfield. We don't dictate that.
Right.
Yeah.
So this is easy for us.
That 9,000 number is really low too, as far as a per pupil cost.
Well, they base it on, you know, their own magic formula, based on relative income and property value. And they do the equalized valuation and all of these little pies that go into determining that particular, and then they provide that to us.
That's a comparative bargaining.
I think Greenfield numbers have actually come down a little bit in the per pupil cost over the last several years.
Can I ask you something?
Sure.
What's the most popular, what is, is most popular that it's going to now?
Yes, well, if I'm going to go the longevity part, probably the electrical program. Seems we had to add a third teacher. You'll see some increases in that. It just, there seems to be a waiting list every year for that program. And the welding programs really increased a lot lately. And who knows how our new program will end up, but there's a lot of interest with the aviation mechanics.
Okay, ask you how.
Yeah, there's a tremendous amount of interest in that. So with the new applicants, but we're only going to do one grade level at a time. The first year is ninth grade. The next year, we're just bringing ninth graders every year until we have four years of grade levels.
As far as district enrollment is concerned, or I, it's impressive numbers just compared to the rest of the districts in Franklin County. How has that changed over the last five, 10 years? I imagine it's gone up.
Yeah, so in 2016, if I remember correctly, we had 434 in district. And then this past year, we're right around 680-ish. I mean, I'll say 580-ish. Yeah, so it's kind of gone up about 140-ish in that timeframe.
Full disclosure, I'm a teacher in a rural district that does not have increasing enrollment at those rates. I'm a little bit jealous, so, but congratulations, I'd say. You guys deserve it, frankly, but.
Thank you.
Seriously, that's a valuable service.
Well, it's nothing I did.
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll move over to our own Greenfield public schools. You guys would like to stay there or move up or however you want to.
Does it work?
Yep.
Thanks for my, thank you.
Center anyway. Okay, so Andy is virtual, but he's available. There are some things I will turn over to him to speak to. I'm going to share with you the presentation that I gave to school committee and then. So this, for this budget cycle, just so that all of you know, we begin prior to the December break where I send a budget email out to all of our staff identifying what the budget process is. And then the principals send one where we are getting. And then the principals send one where we are getting uh requests for materials, books, any kind of program that would be requested by staff in all the buildings. They're given timelines for uh submitting their requests to their building principal. They synthesize, follow up with questions that things at their level. And then um Karen, Andy and I meet with all building principals and other department heads. Look at what they have compiled from all of their staff regarding needs for the following year. And then I synthesize that into what is first referenced as the superintendent's budget. So when I present to the school committee and then they vote on a budget, it then becomes the school committee budget, no longer mine. So what you see is the school committee budget, um, what you will see and talk about is the school committee budget, which was um approved by them with the mayor's abstention, given, given her challenges with the budget process here. So the priorities that came out of the administrative team as well as the strategic plan, uh priority plan from the statewide system of support, which are Department of Education resources that we work with to improve academic performance in the district, um retaining high quality staff, continuing the uh training on high impact instructional strategies, high quality instructional materials. We're looking to update, continue to update our tech resources, address facility needs, which the bulk of that is our security and camera project, provide additional resources for college and career readiness, um, look to increase staffing in our specialized programs, addressing strategic plan priorities. And then um a big one, return previously grant funded items to the local budget. As um Mr. Martin talked about, the ESR three is coming to an end. Um, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four is the last date for use. That is not a substantial factor in the FY twenty-five budget. Um, you know, Councilor Toronto and the mayor from last year, we'll remember, we talked about being mindful of the funding cliff. I am very pleased to say that Greenfield schools are not in the position that many other cities and towns are in making some fairly massive cuts to the school budgets, losing ten, fifteen, twenty positions, and we are not. So we did take some staffing impact last year, but I think big picture was much less than what could have occurred had we continued to staff with ESR three funds and then had to cut millions of dollars in staffing for this year. So um, these are the grant funded positions that we have put back into the local. I'm not going to read everything to you, but you will see across this, um, some of the staff are hugely in part to support our social, emotional, behavioral challenges as well as attendance. Um, every district in the Commonwealth struggles with attendance. The commissioner has come out and made public pleas and spoken um as attendance, improving school attendance as being a priority. Um, about twenty-five percent of the students across Massachusetts were chronically absent after the pandemic. You know, students cannot learn if they're not in the buildings in front of highly qualified teachers. So much of the staff that we've maintained um does have an impact on improving our attendance. Um, the technology, curriculum materials, transportation for field trips, extracurricular stipends, the beacon program and facilities extraordinary maintenance were put into ESR three last year um as one way to help balance um budget impacts. And we're putting them back into the local this year because we still want to support all of these items. Okay. These are specifically aligned to the strategic plan where the priorities are academic performance, attendance and support for our social, emotional uh needs of our students as well as facility type supports, including technology, food service, maintenance and buildings and grounds. So we're continuing to keep our staff, especially to address attendance, staffing to address academic performance, staffing in our um high need programs, specifically our English language learner programs and special education, staff to and procedures, processes to support social, emotional learning and behavioral needs of students. We are continuing to work on academic and social, emotional behavioral interventions and then um tech updates. So those are all directly supported, um, addressed in the strategic plan, which the school committee voted on um last year. These are some additions that are reflected in the FY twenty-five budget. A second assistant special ed director position, when I got to Greenfield, two positions were budgeted, not filled. And then um last year, when we needed to make some adjustments around, you know, absorbing more staffing costs with the ESR three, we reduced one of these positions. But the impact on the special education program and meeting our federal and state mandated timelines is becoming more of a concern. And so we need to add that staff person back so that we are better able to meet timelines for compliance. Um, elementary instrumental music teacher, um, we are looking to support um an arts program and this position ironically, um, it was added my first year as a superintendent. We added the position. We then reduced it because we had an open music position. So the staff person who held the position would not lose a job, which is always a primary concern if we have to make reductions. Um, and now we are, we have added it back into the local budget. And as a matter of fact, we have um, we have hired for it. So um, an English language learner position. We have had an increase in our English language learner student population, as you can imagine. Um, so we are looking to add a position because there are times for service delivery that are uh guidelines and statute. And the regulations from the Department of Education, so to better meet those. And those are based on the level of English proficiency for our students. So um, that fluctuates depending on our population at any one time. But we have English language learners in basically all, maybe except for one school. So we need to make sure that staff that can be across the district. Um, we had cut the float custodian position last year. Um, earlier this year, I spoke to the school committee about reinstating it because the cost for overtime and because of vacant staff positions or people being out, the overtime was actually exceeding what the salary for the float position would have been. So we tried to um address the budget problem and unfortunately that was not, did not work out as intended. So we are looking to replace that float position. Similarly, with an IT staff position, we had one two years ago funded by the ESR two grant. When that grant um sunsetted, uh, we let that position go. But at this stage, given the increases in the technology that we're utilizing and the um because, you know, the staff, the, the materials that we're hoping to purchase to replace things. We also need to update servers and some infrastructure and that is all impacting our staffing. So we are looking to put an IT staff position back. And then um the other piece is in our payroll office, we had, um, we have two folks that work in our payroll office and the requirements for payroll processing as well as the fact that they were doing all of the Family Medical Leave Act paperwork process, the workers comp, um, any accommodations that are being requested by our staff, all of that paperwork. They're doing retirement processing, all of that. And the fact that we have a very paper heavy payroll process at this stage, um, we were not keeping up with all of the pieces that needed to be. And that is clearly not sustainable when it is impacting people's pay. Um, so we added a position to primarily take over the FMLA, workers comp, that type of process. This is also allowing our payroll uh people to work on improving the functions in MUSE, which is our software, our payroll software, because there are a number of functions in there that would make things much more automatic and make things less labor intensive. So the irony is that we didn't have the staff to make the changes in the system, which would have made it easier for the staff that we have. So at some point, the district may not continue to require this additional position, but right now we're flying the plane, you know, we're trying to build the plane while we're flying it. And again, when it goes back to um payroll, we can't really do that. People need to get paid in a timely manner.
True.
Okay. So these are the um, the numbers. So the FY twenty-five budget, we have a local budget and an all funds budget. So all funds incorporate all of our grant, they incorporate um well, primarily grants. Andy, I know I'm not doing just, I'm forgetting something. Sorry. So Andy can add in, but um.
Things like our school choice, other revolving accounts, you know, athletics for what we get for the athletic uh gate receipts, et cetera, building use, uh
Thank you.
Tuition revolving, special education revolving, circuit breaker.
Well, I forgot a lot. I was having a moment apparently. I forgot all the funding sources, but um, thank you. So all funds is when we talk about the use of all of those different types of revenue. So overall, the budget is a three point five eight percent decrease. The local request, however, the original request was an increase of five point eight six percent. But again, for all intents and purposes, outside of a very small allocation, we don't have the ESR three anymore. So you can see the numbers, the requested local appropriation for FY twenty-five. So this is a cost center breakdown, increase and decrease. I will share a few general statements um that impact this summary as well as many of the lines you will see in the I see you have a very good large copy of the budget. I didn't bring my own large copy. I have like negative eight font on my version. So um, but what you will see for the most part are a few things. One, contractual increases. Um, you, those of you who were on uh the council last year may remember, we had um negotiated many of our contracts, primarily teachers and paraprofessionals, our IAs. Um, the teachers, it was a multi-year contract settlement and we had to address multiple years of increases in one budget cycle. So that is um, one of the reasons we saw such a huge increase in salaries last year. This year it is just the FY twenty-five increase, but this does, you know, it's a, it's a three percent increase for our staff pretty much across the board. So that's one piece where you see increases. Two, in some places like North Parish, which is a EL, our preschool, you are seeing that an increase of twenty-three percent because we have not utilized revolving funds at this point. So um, it's not an actual increase of that much. It's just the difference. Um, we're not expecting at this point to use revolving funds. The other thing that you will see is that at some point in prior years, people either have micro lines in the budget, which Andy can speak to, which are not actually required or functionally helpful in, in budgeting. Or people have moved from one building to another, one position to another. But in years past, there, that had not necessarily been reflected in the budget. We are year after year trying to get tighter and tighter and tighter with actually moving people into the places where they exist. Um, so in some cases, you will see that a person who might have been um in one building transferred to another, the salary of the new staff person is higher. So you might see a budget line in one building go up, but you'll see the corresponding budget line in a different building go down. So it's corrections of the budget, changes in the use of revolving or other grant funds and contractual increases generally are affecting that percent increase decrease call. So we can go through you can, I mean, you can all, you guys can all see the, the numbers, um, five point eight six. We do have, we did a transportation contract, which is a fact reflected here. That was a better than eleven percent increase. Um, which was about typical from what we were seeing across you know, transportation contracts. We got one bid, so we went with it. Thought that was a good plan to go with that. Um,
It was a five year bid, correct?
Yes, the council voted to allow us to do a five year, which I think is helpful. Okay. So these are the funding sources. Oh, that's supposed to say FY twenty-five. Um, we are using a little bit of ESR funding in the local, primarily to offset curriculum materials. Um, so after this upcoming, after FY twenty-five, that will have to be absorbed into the local. Title one, title four are uh federal entitlement grants. That's based generally on our free and reduced, our poverty rate. Um, we use those funds to address, we use those funds generally to address academic needs. So we pay for um reading and math interventionists in every building except the preschool. We also use that for some curriculum materials. Um, title four, I always forget the name of the title four grant. Okay. So Yeah. So what we use title four for is to equitably build up our elementary libraries in the last two years so that we had students who could access um quality materials because our elementary libraries were about fifty years. Honestly, some books that were old when I was in school, we had the titles.
Is that cool?
Getting rid of those. Um, TAG is a grant that we get because we are in status or academic status with the Department of Ed because of academic performance primarily. So we get that money um used for professional development, used for stipends for our instructional leadership teams. We expect that we will get it ongoing until we are no longer in that.
Right. Just, are these, these are automatic grants or do you have to apply?
Not all. Um, so we have to do applications for everything which can get approved or not. But the title one, title four and the two IDEA grants, those two are special education. They're entitlement, meaning we're going to get those.
At when?
We will get them, but we have to write the grant for
Sitting on the porch because it was nice and sunny and the next door neighbor, she's got like a little welcome sign. It was just like, wow, wow.
Well, that's against the building. Color, welcome.
Don't, you know, telling us about how nice it is outside. Come here.
Um, I know me. Uh, so we have to write the grant and we have to identify uses that are approved within each grant, but they're called entitlement grants because we will get them. Um, ESR three was actually also an entitlement grant, but that one expires September thirtieth. And TAG is really dependent on the state. We'll find out um each year what we get for the grant funding years here.
And that's the total over here, that thirty million six.
Three point six million. Yes. So school choice, um, we do have school choice in students. We just, the school committee just voted on additional seats, so we advertise those. And then um students apply, you know, to come here. And then circuit breaker is very specific, uh, revenue. Revenue, it is reimbursement for high-cost special education services. So that is done through a formula as Desi loves, very complicated formulas. And what we do is submit. We submit basically an application. It's a very complicated Excel spreadsheet. But we can submit for reimbursement for anything that is four times over foundation. So I will. The state identifies what is a foundational amount for every student. I'm using estimates. These aren't real numbers. We'll say it's ten thousand dollars per student. Once we hit forty thousand dollars of cost for a student with a high-cost special education program. We can ask the state to reimburse us a percentage of what's over that. So. That's what we're estimating based on our current needs, past circuit breaker reimbursement rates. So Andy, if I'm correct, our reimbursement rate is seventy two percent for circuit breaker?
Correct.
Thank you. I was like, oh no. Don't you, Andy. Okay, so what I shared with the school committee is what I will share with all of you that. What we're doing with our budget is making a difference for our kids. In fiscal year twenty three, we were looking at the chronic absentee rate. Now keep in mind, these were as of January. Because that's when I was basically prepping my budget presentation for school committee. We had reduced the chronic absentee rate by over seven percent. Increased our daily attendance rate by ninety one percent. So chronic absentee rate is anyone that's missed ten percent or more of school year. And then our highest absentee month in the school year. We decreased it by about fourteen percent for absentee. So every one of those students represents a student that's in school more to learn. And again. A quote from Jeff Riley about the issue on chronic absenteeism. Greenfield is not alone in struggling with that. So we're having an impact on attendance. We are having an impact on math and English language arts. I think the area to focus on without getting too technical about RIT scores and the NWVA. Are that from the school year two thousand twenty two to twenty three to twenty three, twenty four in math. The percentage of students, students meeting their growth goal in math performance went from thirty one to sixty percent. In English language arts, that same timeframe, percentage of students meeting their growth goal went from thirty five to fifty, just under fifty seven percent. Our statewide system of support staff who were with us reviewing this data said. That is a pretty remarkable change to be looking at. In our special populations.
At the risk of getting too technical here, what is a RIT score? Is it a program you guys are sitting having to or?
No, it's a baseline score per grade level of where a student should be academically. And I forget what the acronym is.
They take like a test or something?
Yeah, so NWVA, we do math testing. So they're bench assessments per grade level, so grades.
Three times a year?
Three times a year. We do fall, winter and spring.
Every grade?
They start in third grade and they go through eighth grade. And there are baseline scores where students should be meeting academic performance based upon the grade level and the content area. And the RIT score is the baseline score where they should be at each benchmark. So in the fall, it, you know, it changes as the year progresses. And what you're looking for is a certain percentage of growth per. Timeframe per grade. And then you can measure what. Content area students are not succeeding in and they go deep dive into some data reports as to. What sections teachers could maybe identify and really do small group instruction.
And how many, how many days in a year? Is it like a two-hour test they take in the morning and they miss a couple of classes? Or what's it look like as far as in the building?
It, it's a ninety minute test.
Ninety minute, okay. Thanks.
I think um, the important piece for us with these benchmark tests is. It helps us change our instruction as we go through the year instead of waiting. Whatever we think of MCAS, which is, you know, it is what it is, we have to get it. So whatever we think of it, we're not going to make. Huge impactful instructional changes based on MCAS because you get it at the end. Um, you know, we talk about. You can talk about using benchmark assessments versus a summative like chef who's cooking. You taste your food along the way. If you wait to taste it, so you've served it, then it's a little bit too late. So we use our benchmarks as sort of tasting food as we go. Thank you for asking that, though. Some of these educational, we know it's super, super jargony, as, as you know. Super jargony, but I think the, the, the part I like to talk about is the. Numbers of students who are growing more than that we expected, which is, you know, huge. Positive and okay, please. We have to focus on two. Student populations who are, who have been struggling in Greenfield with academic growth are English learners and are students with disabilities. So again, I'm showing specifically the percentage of students who've, who've met their growth. Goal. From twenty two, twenty three to twenty three, twenty four, you can see our English learners in math went from twenty three point eight to seventy two percent. Same population in English language arts went from thirty six to sixty two. Special ed students. Just under thirty one to just under sixty and just under thirty seven to just under fifty. So again, our students, they need to grow to eventually hit the performance targets that are at the grade level. And, you know, we're very pleased to see the numbers of students who are meeting those growth percentages. Okay, so one of the things that. If you watch school committee meetings, you would have heard Karen talk about is our work with HQIM, high-quality instructional materials. Those are materials that have been vetted through a variety of processes. And we got a grant because Karen wrote the grant. To fund the purchase of high-quality instructional materials for English language arts and math. And to provide professional development for our staff because there's no point in having these materials. People don't learn how to use. The resources that they have. So when we got the grant with lovingly referred to as OC one eighty five. One of the components of that was that we had to work with a Department of Education-approved vendor. Our vendor is the Teaching Lab. So Teaching Lab is a contracting company for professional development. When they come into the district, they use a tool that they have. To help go through the district to look at what. Um, some indicators are around instruction. They're not evaluating our teachers. They're looking at some instructional processes. And they call a data review a step back. So this is basically a data review. That was from the fall of this year to the winter of this year. Core action one was ninety seven percent of the indicators were. Positive, so they were being implemented. Eighty percent of the indicators in core action two. And hoping we can remember what the core actions were. Teacher-directed instruction, meaning direct instruction to students on specific skills. That they saw happening increased up to ninety two percent of the observed classes, huge. We were using. Content aligned to the high-quality instructional materials in a hundred percent of the classes that were observed. And a hundred percent of the work samples collected were on grade level. With seventy percent of students using those demonstrating full and complete understanding of content and practice. What that means is we are using materials that address the standards. That are culturally competent and that our students are actually reaching that bar. So that is a huge increase. When I came into Greenfield, all three elementary schools had differing literacy programs that they were using. There was no consistent math program that was being used. And when that happens, you can't have, you do not have a lot of consistency or control of ensuring that the standards are being taught. And now we know that they are. So Teaching Lab's comment to us during the step back was that Greenfield is hitting the use of these materials out of the park. It did not pay for any of these positive. Spontaneously uttered during our meetings. We also, we had a lot, a lot of people from a lot of agencies in our schools in the past couple of years. We had progress monitoring visits at two of our elementary schools from the Center for District and School Partnership. When they partnered with us, they told us we're coming whether you want us here or not. So off we go. Areas of strength, you can see we have a positive climate and an absence of a negative climate. That is how the teachers and students interact with each other. Positive behavior management and productivity, meaning all of our instructional times being positively used. We still have some areas of need. Not a big surprise to us. We could. You know, Karen and I kind of anticipated those would be the areas because they are very much in line with the professional learning strategies. That we're working on this year and the district expects to continue next year. So the things that we've been working on, we are seeing positive comments from the people who come into the district to basically assess our progress. Okay, so budget, these are the highlights. We are budgeting for twelve school counselors. You can see the amount of money that's budgeted for physical education staff. Our in-district music program plus strings for kids, our art staff. Stipends for extracurricular activities, instructional leadership teams. The materials that have been requested by staff as well as the ones that we know that are necessary. Like the math and literacy materials that we talked about. Field trip funding for all of our schools, new library books. And free, we still, we have been and continue to pay for free before-school care at all the elementary schools. I'm not sure how many folks realize that, but we provide that at all three schools.
Do you provide it for. For Rivers Charter as well?
No, we don't.
So I thought I saw. One of our little mini buses delivering food there one more.
We do food. We, they work with our food service department, but that's the only place. We don't do.
Do you do that at goodness of your heart or they?
No, I don't believe so. Our food service department is actually self-funded. So they're, um, we don't have any budget lines around our food service department. They're self-sustaining. So they work with Ford Rivers Charter School and provide meals. But there's, there's a, you know, free meals are subsidized, so that whole process kicks in for the, for the females. Okay, so. We have professional development and structures in place to support staff so that they're meeting our student needs. We're increasing resources for students. We are. Working with SSOS, our statewide system of support, professional development and our instructional leadership teams. We actually were asked to work, help out with another district. Who is about a year behind where Greenfield is in our academic change. Because our statewide system of support people are so happy with the structures that we have put into place. And we have data that is showing that what we're doing is having a positive impact, which is really the important thing.
Is this statewide system support related to like multi-tiered system support? Is it like an SEL thing or is it?
Well, statewide, there's some more educational items, right? Um, statewide systems of support is actually people. We have a team of three people that are assigned to Greenfield through the Department of Education. That comes to work with us.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. So that, that's that part. I, you know, um, I'd like to have Andy speak about. The budget, the structure in a general sense. Because honestly, the, we, we already have too many budget lines. So I'm gonna have him just briefly talk to you about why we have the budget lines to teach you. Andy, can you speak to that?
Sure. Um, so what it is, is the, the Department of Ed under Ed reform and also constant revisions. We have, similar to what the city has, the city follows the UMass, UMAS, Universal Municipal Accounting Structure. For their chart of accounts, we have the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Chart of Accounts, which is. Primarily driven by function codes. There are specific definitions for function codes and what it is that the expenses would be attributed to. Related to everything from supplies, salaries, and even broken down salaries by. Permanent, you know, special education, regular education. You know, that, but the, like regarding like the public comment, for example, there is no set. Chart of account defined by the Department of Ed for music, like supplies or materials. Music is considered regular education and therefore the music teacher would be embedded in the regular ed teacher line. As would the instructional materials related to instruments or sheet music, anything related to the music program. Would be in instructional supplies or instructional equipment. We have that level of detail, but when time comes for reporting purposes, we have to follow the. The Department of Ed Elementary and Secondary Education Function Code. So. You know, just because you don't necessarily see it explicitly there, doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. And I'll say that when we get audited, it's a compliance review every year that auditors come in. And do a compliance review of the, the function codes and the end of the year people financial report that drives our reporting. And our funding, uh, information to the state. There's always citations about the fact that the chart of account is not fully in compliance with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Chart of accounts. Now, I somewhat agree and disagree with that at the same time. I'll, you know, for my own editorial comment on that. You know, as Dr. DeBard alluded to, quite honestly, we have too many. Too many account, chart, accounts here because it is. Getting to the point where for, you know, the granular information is good for the practitioners. And the building administrators and program directors, but as far as understanding what it is that is going towards education. It is better to have less chart of accounts as long as you have the integrity of making sure that. If you're calling something an other instructional service, that indeed it is another instructional service. And I will give Greenfield a tip of the hat because from my audit days and from. My days as far as the other clients that we provide our services to. We aren't there yet as far as doing the consolidation, but it is an ongoing process and we're farther ahead than the other districts. That from my days as an auditor to the day, uh, like I say, the clients that I'm currently providing my company's providing services to. Are, uh. Are farther behind.
There's a very good example of that. If you look under our middle school budget page. See, if the teacher, sixth or teacher, second. Math and Science Academy teachers, none of those need to be broken out. They are in essence all regular and middle school teachers. That level of. Data is not. It's not necessary and quite frankly, at this point, those four lines are not even like, we don't. As we are building the budgets in the past few years, we're not maintaining that. So because they're all just regular teachers. So you'll see some lines start to get zeroed out as we move them into. Like if somebody leaves, you don't put their replacement in a. Micro line, we put it in the general staffing line.
Was that general staffing line essentially the grade seven line? Where it's kind of fallen?
Let me find my page.
The answer is yes.
And the math and science academy one you were just saying is also at some point maybe zeroed out and absorbed into that as well?
Yeah, that's the goal. The goal that, the goal that we're doing with both the, the city finance department and. As Christine even alluded to on the payroll HR side of things is really to. Use the financial accounting system to its fullest capability and some of. And some of the things that we're talking about here as far as making it more manageable and understanding because it's, it's daunting, don't get me wrong. I mean, we live, some of us live in these worlds where this level of detail is, you know, we love it. You know, as far as if you want to get Accounting Geek 101, I mean, this is, you know, some of, you know, people might like this. But, you know, the big thing from, I'd say, from the Department of Ed's point of view, from management point of view, is that when time comes for reporting, there's really primarily four areas that they look for as far as reporting on regular ed, special education, vocational ed, and then what they call like undistributed. You know, that's kind of the, the building administration, general overall administration of both building and district wide. So, um, and then when you look at a thing like, you know, as far as some of the, the questionings, I guess I'd say the, the level of detail that is provided here. I mean, when you look, you have three years of actuals compared to the FY24 budget compared to FY25 request. So when time comes for administration to do our budgeting for FY25, we do a combination of obviously starting with the needs-based approach. But then we look at things where both increasing for contractual obligations for whether it's the rate setting that's set by the state for the chapter 766 special education out of district programs, we factor that in. But then we do trend analysis to see what our trends are in some of these non-salary, non-contractual expenses to then look to see if there's trends that need to be addressed in our FY25 request, which are done. So I'd say it's both, it's a very comprehensive approach to what it is that you see in front of you.
Two questions I have to start. One being, are some of these possibly broken out in the way they are because of where the funding sources are coming from and stipulations on funding sourcing?
No.
Okay.
They're not.
I was gonna say that. Do you have a specific line that you're?
No, just thinking of why, I mean, this is a lot of, you know.
Detail.
Yeah, it's a lot of chart, you're right, this is a lot of charting of accounts that seems like it could definitely be consolidated just from any.
And I can tell you, to put on my forensic, you want to say historical accounting in my, my data, again, I was an auditor with the Accountability Agency for the state when, uh, Ed reform first came in. What this, I'm gonna say depicts is, once the Department of Ed came out with the required function codes, they themselves would even admit that they were kind of build, the cliche as Christine mentioned before, same thing, building a plane while flying it. So districts would in a sense just create accounts, create accounts. And then once every, they got, they being the DESI, say, got better at, you know, how do we want to make this more manageable? You know, we already got down to this granular level and now the goal is to get it to a point where it's, you know, consolidated, more manageable. Yes, the granular information is needed by building administrators and program directors and they have that. But when time comes, when you're looking at this, it, it, it's very easy for all of us that don't live in this world to get lost, quite honestly.
The other thing I wanted to ask was, so part of, um, so I appreciate that you broke out, you know, these, um, these lines that are in a similar line together. Like, teaching staff has the same organizational line, right? But you broke it out into the, the different elementary schools?
Yeah.
Um, that was, yeah, the cost centers. The, I think what I heard you say, Andy, was that some of these, even though the descriptions there don't necessarily cover, um, I'll use one as a, a good example. Is the, like, like, um, something that says like sped transportation staff. You were asking about this earlier. That's also including, I guess you'd say like material to go with it. It's not just straight line salaries. Is that what you're saying is it can also include the function?
That's a, as much as you would think that was a good example, that isn't a good example. That's, that's specifically, that's specifically staff. You're still hired, but that's specifically staff. It's more, if I, I'll get inside going down, it would be the, uh, if you were to look at like instructional supplies or any of the, the consumables would be the area where it's, it's general in its description, but underneath there would be things potentially like, uh, I'm going to the, the schools with the music programs. They would have in underneath their instructional supply lines. If they've got music instruments, they might be there. Or if there's an instructional equipment line, depending on the cost of the instrument, it would be there. You know, so that captures everything that per the Department of Ed that they would consider would be instructional materials, instructional supplies related to anything in a program and not even just music. It would be things, if we had our, uh, you know, another, like a robotics program, for example, or something, you know, if there were anything related to that, that would not generate its own line per se. It would then be underneath those categories per the DESI chart of accounts.
So I can give you a great example, if you look at the high school for, uh, instructional supplies. So there's two lines, instructional supplies and elective supplies. Those don't really need to be, that's for sort of all, um, instructional supplies. But that includes, um, replacement novels for our English department, pencils, calculators. It would include welding equipment for our technical classroom, food for our, uh, cooking classes. It's everything in the school, basically, that's used for instruction. It's all in those. But if I went to the high school, I would expect, and he did, for the principal to say, chef asked for X amount of money for food. The art teachers asked for this amount of money. Literally, the building principals have the amount of, it's this much red paint, this much purple paint. But that's not functional for presenting or for me administering a budget.
Training literally with staff is kind of like just saying salary.
It is salary.
Okay.
Serves on.
Something that I, I would find helpful as far as information, and I, it sounds like it wouldn't be appropriate to put it into this budget, but just, you know, like teaching staff, for example. How many teachers are covered by this line item? Like a chart or something in the narrative describing, you know? Because when I'm thinking about a school and I don't know Greenfield, you know, public schools, I'm not working here, I live in town. I want to know how many kids in a classroom, how many paraprofessionals or, you know, education professionals serving those kids? You know, how many administrators in a building, you know, that kind of, what does it look like in these buildings? You know, as far as those numbers are concerned?
We can, and actually the mayor and I had a conversation about that. But the timeframe around the request was a little, uh, okay. So, uh, there are some things that are static, generally static and that are very easy to report. The numbers of principals, pretty static. Class size is going to range dramatically. You know this. The paraprofessionals could shift one day to the next. What we could give next year in the budget is how many positions were budgeted for. But by the time you get it at ways and means, the numbers are likely going to be different.
Right.
But we can give, you know, if ways and means wants total counts of staff, I can forward that. We know how many, um, principals are budgeted for. We know how many paraprofessionals are, are, we're being paid for right now. But we do have a lot of shifts and changes. So some of that is, is going to be a little bit challenging, but.
Yeah, whatever, you know, I, I know at least I would be grateful for that information. I don't want to speak for everybody, but.
Yeah, that's, are you asking for it for this year based on what we're currently paying? Or you're just looking for it for future budget years?
Um, I mean, if it's available and it's not a heavy lift to give us just even rough numbers for this upcoming budget, that would be targets.
We certainly give you rough numbers.
But I also don't want.
Upcoming budget.
Right, and I'm not asking for an impossible lift either. I don't want to put that on your plate.
No, generals, we can tell you like how many teachers we're paying, how many paraprofessionals we're paying, that kind of thing. Plus, you know, class sizes will change by subject grade level. So.
Of course.
You know, that's, that's a little bit more challenging, but. Yeah, we expect to incorporate some of that into next year's budget. It was just a timing issue this year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That'd be helpful because, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Because when I look at the increases and you've talked about the increases in personnel and rattled off a few positions, but I don't have a sense of like, how many additional FTEs are you adding? And are, are those additional people or were there vacancies? So, you know, just trying to understand the, the landscape would be really helpful.
Cause, yeah.
You know, we're looking for a big personnel up, so what does that mean?
I hope that's not me.
No, it's me.
No, okay. What I, so, yeah. We can articulate how many FTEs we're looking for. Some of the challenge is going to come in, in that if we are comparing lines, like for example, I'll just use that middle school situation that I articulated. If we were to have given you FTEs under grade five, grade six, grade seven, and math and science academy, next year, the FTEs will be different because in each line we potentially are consolidating. So you won't be able to look at, oh, grade seven went from four to three, so that must mean they lost a position. But that position is probably budgeted for in a different line where it's more appropriately reflected. So we talked about this actually at a school committee meeting, um, not that long ago, where, given the time, Andy can in fact sort of create a consistent reporting structure where he might have to go backwards and say, all the people that were in grade five, grade six, grade seven and the math and science academy really were just one group. And if I take all of them and budget backwards X many years and then forward X many years, but you can imagine that is not a quick, um, thing. So again, certainly can talk about the FTEs, really the positions that I talked about in this presentation, and I have another patent.
Yeah, because I was trying to like, I was trying to like count up.
I actually have a second.
And I left it at home, I was running.
That's totally fine. The positions that I listed as being added into the budget are really the FTEs that are new. That's the last one. But again, to compare the number of people on one line, one year to the next, might be challenging and sort of consolidation happens. But in terms of new positions, that's, that's sort of amazing.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Yep, and the vacancies, we budget for vacant, like, because a position is vacant now, it is in the budget. But that's because we've been trying to fill it and we continue to try it, the lift. Does that make sense?
It does.
Goodness. Okay, I'm not giving myself too much credit at this point.
No, because I, you know, I know you can shift budgets, like, oh, we haven't been able to fill that, so.
Yes, that's, thank you.
I have some questions. Number stuff.
Andy and I will do our best.
So my first question is, what is integrated art?
I'm sorry?
Integrated art.
Integrated arts is art, music, physical education and library.
Okay, so that, does that, that doesn't include, um, staff?
It is staff. Can you tell me what age you're on, or is it a general?
Well, like, it's on every page.
Yes, so every building has, um, integrated arts teachers.
Right.
We, um, the high school and the middle, well, the high school has art, part of a music teacher, then they have multiple physical education and health teachers. At the elementary level, we have six, between art, music and physical education, we have six people and they travel around all three elementary schools. So they're captured in different places solely, uh, so that we don't put a third of each of them.
Right, right. But, but I had a feeling that what was, what it was, but how you divide the.
Well, we didn't, we kind of said that, you know, you go here, you go here. Otherwise, we were worried we'd lose like a third of the person somewhere.
Regarding North Parish School, what?
Yes.
What's the enrollment these days?
I believe we're about ninety-five, if I'm not mistaken. I think if you need a precise, I think Andy has it, but I.
Has that gone up or down?
Um, up since after the pandemic.
And prior to the pandemic.
Up since last year as well.
Yeah, because I, I asked because there's a lot of years, prior years that there, uh, was no building monitor. And now there is one and I was wondering.
There's no?
I'm looking at little numbers because they create big numbers.
So at North Parish, our student need, I'm looking at the histories for the FY25 actuals. We have an integrated preschool program, which means it's really there to serve the needs of students with special education needs. So we keep a ratio of, in every classroom, eight typical peers and seven students with disabilities. So we have had a pretty significant increase in staffing needs because we have a lot of students who require paraprofessional support. We've had to increase passes like going into next year. We're actually going to need to increase someone who was teaching only more sections of preschool. We're going to have to make that first full-time.
But this is specifically building monitor. That's it.
We actually don't have a building monitor at AEL, so I am not sure. Andy, can you help me with who's half-time a building monitor? I'm wondering. Yeah, nine eleven, nine, um, um, North Parish. It could be the sub, a building, is that it, building?
Correct.
Yes, so we have a substitute that we have in place because of the numbers of students with significant needs and the fact that we had paraprofessionals or teachers who may be out and those students can't get in there. And we have, like every district, we have a hard time paying the significant.
I was just curious because it's a building monitor and it was like several years without.
Well, obviously I had a moment, but it is the sub that we have, so she can fill in for the vacancies.
If I may also, this is a classic example of the cleaning up of the chart of accounts because of that fact that the DESI just changed in FY24. There, there's a new function code that they've added called long-term sub that is ultimately then, as much as we're trying to consolidate accounts, we're going to have to add that as we, going forward. But until then, because of the fact that the, the traditional sub-line that is district-wide is for short-term, this being a long-term position, the closest category that it was to capture it was to put it under that building monitor line.
What is the, um, the sub-rate in the district? What do they get paid per day?
Oh, we just went up, I want to say the teachers might be one twenty a day for, for certified teacher. We did just do a market analysis, um, and bumped ourselves up to sort of, for the mid to top of the range for paraprofessionals and for future subs.
And forget my ignorance, are the paras unionized or no?
They are.
They are.
Can I just clarify, not the subs? Okay, it's funny.
Yeah, and this probably, there's a reason why it fluctuates. I'm looking at, um, what corners?
Let me find four corners. Okay.
Social worker.
Oh, I can tell you that one.
It's like almost doubled to this?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're two?
No. In FY24, we budgeted for a particular social worker who by the time the budget process ended, um, was not with us anymore. And we had an internal transfer and the FY25 salary actually reflects the person who's in the position. So the difference is because of someone with varying degree, experience and placement on the salary scale.
So, I know that, uh, I was a former baseball coach. I know there's no middle school baseball team, but it looks like there is a, no middle school sports whatsoever.
There are, they are all under the high school.
Okay.
All the coaching stipends are under the high school. Actually, I think a, a good chunk of our athletic, um, expenses have all been moved under the high school line.
And a controversial question here.
Okay, might as well.
So between the highs, between the high school and the middle school have to use one term, six principals. I'm trying to wrap my head around that because, you know, that's six hundred thousand. I'm trying to wrap my head around that because, you know, that's six hundred thousand dollars.
So here's what I. Correct. Plus, here's what I can tell you. When you are in the buildings, day to day, you see the needs of the students that we're dealing with. And let's be honest. I'm sure everybody in the room's been on Facebook at one time or another, seeing the issues that people are sharing about high school students, middle school students, elementary students, whether they're accurate or not. We have students that have a lot of need, and we need adults in the buildings to support them. And I appreciate that that's not necessarily where parents go. You know, the building principals are not the superstars. It's the classroom teachers who are interacting with the kids on a day-to-day basis. But when you have students who have substantial attendance issues, social, emotional, mental health needs, we have to work, let's be honest, every high school in in America needs to address vaping issues. We have needs and we cannot do all of that. Do the required evaluation processes for all of our teachers, paraprofessionals, custodians, administrative assistants, everybody in the building has to be evaluated and depending on their time in the district, that varies. Some it's one observation a year, some it's four. Every one of those has a subsequent meeting. We also have to do all the academic work. We're doing building walkthroughs. We have a cycle in the district of, visited six, six cycles where we're observing in every single building. Every single classroom in every single building. So all of the academic work that has to be done, all of the student support work that has to be done, the administrative stuff. Absolutely, there've been laws that have changed that impact discipline procedures. We now are required by law to utilize less supportive measures prior to exclusionary discipline. That's not a bad thing. But it adds, it adds process to, um, responding to student discipline. So.
It just seems like a large number.
I have to be very frank, it is not a large number at all when you look at the day-to-day needs in all of our buildings. It is really.
Considering this fourteen hundred, I mean, you know, it's pretty small school.
I just have to tell you, knowing what has to be done on a day-to-day basis, it's it is absolutely not doable with less than what we've got. I appreciate that we may not come from the same place, but I, you know, respectfully share that we've got a lot more time in in the building, seeing what we see, what we're dealing with. So I think.
I ask because people ask.
Of course, I do appreciate that. And I, I feel like we are required to do a lot, and that takes, that takes the very unglamorous administrative positions to get it done.
Okay, just a couple of more questions. You add, it looks like you've added, well, I don't know, it had to do with the pandemic.
Can you tell me what page?
That's you.
Me?
Yeah.
It's me, my office. What I did in my.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so you used to have just an administrative assistant, and in the last couple of years, you've added a personal assistant as well.
I need to find mine.
Line one sixty-eight.
One sixty-eight.
Well, sixteen, one seven, six eight, six nine.
One seven, sixty. The personnel assistant.
That's the five oh four coordinator.
Thank you. I, I was getting there. So that's a district position that we actually had as a vacancy last year. That's not a new position this year. It's not filled. Oh, actually, it is filled for next school year. We're very happy. One of our principals is actually moving out of her principal's role and into this role. Um, section five oh four is, um, federal, that, um, we need to support students and staff, quite frankly, that have physical or mental impairments that require accommodations or related services. And there are federally dictated processes that need to happen to support those students. And across the district, we probably have about a hundred and fifty students that are impacted. And right now, my one special director is trying to address all the five reports and lockdown keeps. And I can assure you, it is not working. One person cannot do all that. So that's what that position is.
Is there a particular reason why, I mean, I see that there's, I was gonna ask this question, was why there was no line item for anything in the five oh four services? For coordinator, cuz I know that there is one. Why it moved over into?
Five oh four services, if they're really the kid-related expenses. If, for example, if a student, um, who needed a particular accommodation that was technology-related, if we had to buy a computer, that would be what.
Gotcha, okay.
Again, I'm just looking at numbers. Is it unrealistic to suggest that, uh, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent share an admin assistant?
It is.
Save fifty thousand dollars for?
It is unrealistic.
Yeah.
Yes, very much so. My admin assistant does, um, all of the personnel stuff. So by contract, we have to send letters. Um, we have the process for onboarding, for offboarding, um, so that yes, it would not be a realistic, uh, request right now.
Um, okay, and then on page eight. And I know technology is expensive. And you have to pay those people substantial amount of money to do their jobs. I am curious to know if, uh, that positions of the data management staff, is that one person, two persons?
Um, wait a minute, no, that's gotta be two people because that is not one person.
Okay.
Um, hold on. Andy, can you tell me, uh, line one seventy-five to increase? I don't wanna give you wrong information, so Andy can look in the back end of the budget and tell me.
Give me him.
He may have accidentally muted himself.
No, I apologize. I'm just, uh, if you could just give me a minute, I'm pulling up the personnel.
Yeah. Did you hear me, line one seventy-five?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that's where we were. Andy, I think that's where we reflected the additional staff.
That is correct. That is where it is, yes.
Sort of figured that. And network staff as well. That's a pretty big number.
A couple of.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I have a question for the assistant superintendent, only because maybe I wasn't paying attention and I missed the meeting. What is the the contract? Oh, is that, that's a three-year contract?
I'm sorry, what line?
The assistant su- uh, uh, assistant superintendent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One eighty-six.
Yep, there's a, a three-year contract.
And does that include raises per year? Can I have that number? Do you have it?
Uh, this was actually what was budgeted. This is not actual. Um, the contract first year was one forty? I think I'm right. I think it was one forty. Not forgetting, this budget was created prior to any changes, um, at the administrative level. So this was actually budgeting, assuming Karen's contract, not the new one. So the first year, the new one is one forty, and I don't recall off the top of my head if we built in increases for the subsequent years. I don't recall it top of my.
And it is a three-year contract.
It is.
Mayor's here and the D P's still being directed here.
Thanks.
So let's see if we can figure out a different way or a different place to park the buses and save the city twenty thousand dollars. Park our little mini-buses. We pay rent at a church.
We do, yes. Well, we also have staff that works there, middle school staff. Because the parking lot was not big enough to accommodate central office staff when Data Street was moved to the basement of the middle school. So we need additional parking for our middle school and central office staff. It's not just the buses.
It's too bad that we have to pay twenty grand.
It is too bad, but I.
Hey, when was the last time that was contracted? You just did, and your guy wasn't interested in doing anything.
Less, no.
The Catholic Church doesn't have it, doesn't have enough money.
The new guy seems to be, the new guy seems to be much more community-oriented, so no supply that he did.
I did not negotiate the last contract around the parking lot, but I can tell you the folks I dealt with were, were great. We contract for, like, basically like two double rows of parking spaces on the backside, but it is also staff, not just the buses.
And we also have, because we pocket that wherever we obligated for plow.
Yes.
Which costs you a labor when it snows. And that may never happen again.
That may just happen to me, relations can be some work on a little bit, uh, and, you know, I was trying to get a dialogue going with, with, with people there to see if, you know, in the future, we can do something, but, you know, so. Anything else, Mike?
Yes.
Line four, three, seven, two, five.
Now, speaking of the buses, okay, so transportation staff.
Let me find it.
Top of the page, page eleven, last page, we're getting close.
Eleven, okay. Page eleven, yes.
Eight hundred seventy-eight plus thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
And that's for how many drivers?
Don't know.
You don't know how many drivers would have. But this is, uh, this is.
Those are our staff.
That's your, our staff.
Our staff.
Who knows the answer to that?
Well, uh, know that you wanted, oh, Andy has it. Full please.
Thirty-four staff.
But they were all parked time?
Not necessarily. That's the thing. This is the planning for the fact that we do our own transportation, but also we do, we, we, the plan prior to our arrival was that, uh, when the vans were purchased to run our own special education transportation was that we would provide transportation services to other other districts that needed in the surrounding communities, which we do. Uh, and so it was.
We get reimbursed for that?
Yes, we do. We charge them. Yeah. And that goes into the transportation revolving account. And so, you know, as, as much as I know you, it, it might seem like a lot, uh, but when you look at the actual in FY twenty-three and actual in FY twenty-two, it was eight forty-two and eight thirteen, eight, eight forty-two in FY twenty-two and eight thirteen in FY twenty-three. So the trending, again, back to the thing, the trending is actually in line with previous years.
And, and how, how are those drivers? You said thirty-four drivers? Is there a coordinator as well?
Yes, you have a transportation coordinator, yes.
So that's in that staff number, correct?
Yeah. Yes, Andy?
Yes.
I believe, yeah.
Could you share what that is, that person's being paid? Just curious. I don't know if you have, Andy, do you have that number?
I do. Uh, this, again, there's a new coordinator, but this one was budgeted for sixty-two thousand, seven hundred, sixty-two dollars and eighty-four cents.
We are in, we have an agreement with a neighboring district where they help us offset the cost of that salary for some support with their transportation coordination.
Speaking of transportation, I see that there, there's a lot of the, uh, there's the contract, and this one for transportation contracted, which I assume is the uh, Kismasgus, right? Um, is that, that wasn't, is that the whole amount for that contract? Because if I remember right, I'm seeing the other lines in here for, um, like field trip transportation, um, on, like each school's got an allotment, and then there's a district wide one in here, but I remember in the contract, maybe I'm wrong, that there was a certain amount of field trips built into the contract rather than just only to and from school, there was. Or was it recreation that I'm remembering, like?
No, you're, you're correct. There's, the issue is that this transportation is the regular education transportation of to and from schools for reporting purposes to the state.
Yep.
Yes, when we go out to bid, we do ask for them to provide us quotes for athletic transportation and field trips. But those are considered athletic-related expenses and field trip-related expenses, which would be in the respective schools and the athletic department, so.
We'd be combining all of those together to get the one number for the contract for the year.
That's correct.
That's what I was, yeah.
Could you speak to, um, what's going on with the school committee secretary and, um, line three oh eight on the same page? Were they part-time and now they're full-time? Like, what's the, what's the story with that one?
So that's the addition of the position that I talked about that.
You've refreshed me.
Yep, um, we brought in a position to assist the payroll office with the, um, FMLA workers comp. All of that. We brought that position in so that our payroll person can do payroll plus work on the UNIS uh, backend to make things more efficient. So the, the salary for that new position has been added to that line.
And why that line, just logistically?
Part of what her job is, is she, um, does the minutes for subcommittee meetings.
Okay.
So she's connected to school committee function.
Yeah, I thought when, well, it's highlighted.
Everyone, yeah, I think was interested in.
Sometimes we have fifty percent increase, you know?
Is a thing, it is, absolutely.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so the mayor cut one hundred thousand?
Within twenty-two thousand five.
Five hundred fifty-six. If you care to share, yeah. Right, she cut forty, four hundred, twenty-two thousand, five hundred fifty-six.
Yes, I, I didn't hear that number. I thought, my goodness, that's a lot less than what I thought. Yes.
For dollars.
Yes, she did. And we have, um, un- unfortunately, but fortuitously, we identified, um, a little billing issue, we had a billing error with Kismasgus, so we were able to offset half of that with the credit from Kismasgus for next year. And then we, um, had previously been using revolvings for special intuitions, and we're gonna take the rest of that reduction through by using revolve.
No jobs are.
No.
Got any, got any more room till I?
Come on now, you know I'm not gonna say that. But one thing I do want to clarify, when we say no jobs cut, no budget related. We do have a few positions because of reduction in numbers at the elementary schools. But we do also have some folks who have already indicated that they're not coming back to the district, so it is very low likelihood that those people will not have an opportunity for a job. But we are reducing three classroom teacher positions. But again, I think that they will have the opportunity to stay in the district due to other people.
I ask because, as you know, mayor explained earlier, we are close to the bone. We have, uh, seniors that are struggling to pay their
Yes.
taxes. Anything that we can find to, uh, make things a little more comfortable for people would be much appreciated.
Absolutely. I think that, um, you know, from a, maybe not a this year impact as much, but I feel like, um, in the time I've been in Greenfield, I have been very fiscally responsible. Two years ago, went to the mayor and asked if we could consolidate the little amounts left in prior capital um, requests after those projects had been finished to move all the money into one so that we could use that to do our phone upgrade instead of me asking for a new capital request. Um, we used district funds, not, not inappropriately, but we just used district funds to buy a new bus for our fleet because one of ours aged out, I'll say. aged out, I'll say, it was no longer um, functional DPW.
And you did, you did. Beth, but I got, that all happened before you, the fleet of buses, right?
They were um, created prior to me, yes.
Yes. Would would this school budget be better off uh, contracting that out, would it be less expensive or expensive?
Wow.
Did anybody like?
Well, we've talked about that, that is a, an ongoing conversation, and as a matter of fact, prior to our former transportation coordinator leaving. One of the, one of the action items in our strategic plan was to do a cost analysis, the transportation department. Um, I think there's some challenges, it's obviously um, rather expensive for us to run our own. Um, this is primarily special education, we also.
Plus, those people are on city, over city payroll and with all the benefits that come along with that.
Yes. But we do our own McKinney Bento, our own homeless transportation, our own special education transport. We do a lot of um, smaller field trips. So there is benefit to the district in doing that. Um, some of the challenges that I see dealing with other districts is there are not a lot of vendors for special ed transportation up in this area. And so I, we do, the district does need to do a, a cost analysis of the transportation department, of course. Um, but these are some questions I would have, like, how likely are we to get other vendors to do it? That's, you know, and Andy talked about the fact that we were doing, excuse me, transportation for other districts, it's because we are the only game in town for them. So that is definitely a big question that will have to be answered, is, is there actually vendors available to take up the slack if we were to let it go? I mean, Kuzmaskis just went up eleven percent on our contract, I don't know what what that would have looked like if we were also having them do all of our in-district special ed transportation. Preschool, half-day, we've got two buses running in the middle of the day for our preschool. So all of that would have to be factored in, so I don't know, but.
Thank you, we did get a little cost savings from being a part of the, the group.
We did, was it a nine, nine-member district that went out to bid for?
Speaking of which, have you guys thought about uh, regionalizing?
That's outside of the purview. I'm gonna cut that one right off.
You wanna join the school committee?
Alright.
Well, I just want to graduate these other success stories, it's, it's amazing to me that we never hear the success stories. You know, we always hear all the stu- all, all, all the problem stuff and all the negative stuff, and we very here to so I, I think one of your challenges, if you take over, is to how to get the good word out, how do we tell the people of the community what's going on in their school systems that they can be proud about, those numbers prideful numbers, you know? I think the other thing, you have to keep coming up over it, over it, over it, over it, over again. You gotta sell the upper management why it's so important to have you, because not just because you know and you know, but why, how can the public know why, what these people are doing, why it's so important, what's gonna happen if they're not there? That sort of stuff, to get that word out so people aren't just reacting to, you know, whatever it is, yeah, we all wanna save money, but we all, we have to run the schools too, there's gonna be that balance.
We do, schools are very regulated in depth.
And if I, if I may just.
Fix all the problems in our society. Right, so, absolutely.
It is a good point, it is.
Thank you very much, right.
Oh, Andy, you have, sorry.
Yeah, just wanted to share that uh, almost like, I'd say piggybacking off of that comment that um regarding, I'll say like, one of the positions as far as that I know has been talked about, the assistant superintendent. I understand uh, in a public comment regarding that, but the Department of Ed also has a thing, as much as sometimes I might sound like I'm critical of them. They have this tool called the District Analysis Research Tool, which does, they take all sorts of statistical information to then come up with districts that are comparable to any district in the state. And so when, while the discussion was going on, I did the DART, they call the DART tool for Greenfield, and of the ten districts that we are comparable to, and it isn't, that isn't necessarily by geography, it is by demographic, by size, by test scores, they have all sorts of metrics that go into what it is included. And of the ten districts that we were compared to, nine of them had a comparable position to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Accountability.
Yeah, thanks, Andy.
Yep.
I just wanna say, I'm really grateful to hear there are no uh, staff that are going to be eliminated because of the budget cut.
Absolutely, and I will go back to the thing I said at the beginning, we did have some pain with some staff reductions last year, but we're, we're actually in remarkably good shape compared to most other districts right now, so.
I'm, I'm thrilled to hear it.
Me too.
Um, I agree with um well, one, one thing I think to bring up for future as well, and, and as Counselor Garrett uh, suggested. I mean, I know that we've kind of, we've asked for this in years past, and this wasn't just from you guys, from all departments, having to do with staff, more of a breakdown. So people can see the FTEs, and I know that the business units are already ridiculous, um, and we're not, I don't think we'd be looking for any more. We don't need to know what, how much to spend on red paint and blue paint, you know, we don't need that kind of cost analysis on some of those things, but I think a lot goes into, as, as Michael's saying too, even though it can even though I know it can alter year by year, or somebody might get moved over here, because of I think just the overall picture of that might eliminate some questions, if you will, as to where that's going, and that's a very easy, almost an easy flip to I don't know, a little quick blurb or a slide or something to, to show if to assuage those questions ahead of time is uh, like, alright, look, if you see that there's a reduction in, in Federal Street, as you, as you alluded to, of like, you know, ten percent, but you see an increase at Newman of, that's a very easy thing to do, we move somewhat. And, and the allocation is um, better.
And not that any of you wants to go back and watch the school committee thing where I did the budget presentation, but we I did go through the entire budget.
Right.
Almost any line that had more than a ten percent variance we talked about, so I did articulate all of that micro information, but, uh, you know, three hours of the budget presentation, I'm not sure any of you wanna go back and watch, but I can, I am quite happy to send to you the numbers of staff that we have now that we're paying, but that's not gonna give the picture, I think you're looking for, how many FTEs last year, how many FTEs?
Well, I don't know if there was a way on, on this type of thing, I know, like, you know, some finance, you can, yeah, I forget what they're called, this, this may be a pivot table. You could, right, you can like, almost having like a link, like uh, almost as, as Rick was showing us earlier.
Yes.
If there's, if we get this kind of thing, and we, we were to click on, boom, uh North Parish teaching staff, it would be like, this is what we got, it's like, you know, there's seven people there, you know, I don't know, just something like that, like a
Average classroom size of, right, teen or whatever it might be, yeah.
We can share any information that we think would be well, Karen can share any information that you think would be, so know that, yeah.
And I mean, not just for our benefit either, for anybody who's, who's, you know, going through those uh, from home.
I think the budget presentation is something that evolves every year, and I know I do it differently than prior people, and Karen will do it differently with input, so. Happy to do.
I, I was glad to hear that even with the reduction from the mayor's budget, you can make up for it, um, my follow-up is to the mayor, what, where were the places that you saw you were reducing, um, that there was?
I didn't, that I knew was totally I thought that was the superintendent's, and, or, or the budget committee's purview. I looked at the overall numbers. And, you know, I, I thought we gave a number, I did speak to the superintendent. I wanted to make sure that it wasn't gonna be staff, but I thought that's I had enough time doing my, hard enough time doing my own, I thought that should be something that was on yours to make the initial choices.
So that's actually the school committees to do, to do the expenditure determinations. So even after the final budget determination, if there is significant change from what they voted, um, they'll have the opportunity to reallocate funds within lines, but they do the, they do the expenditure allocation. I think that's a final number for it.
I did, just was curious if, if, if there was a place that she saw, so.
Yours?
Understate?
It's mine, I'll, I'll be here for a while.
You guys are, are off the hook. Have a good day at school tomorrow.
Let's hope, no more snow days, we're good now.
Yeah, I got the vacation, so like.
Right, leaving that Saturday?
I said we were good in March, so.
Heating for last week.
Nice major.
The superintendent said, that's it, that's the last stage, so we're done.
Say snow on.
Thank you.
We have this thing about snow, I was just saying that for a nice peak at five AM on a snow day.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we don't like using snow.
Yeah, I have to make the call to her agency, and it is her favorite thing that she does by far.
I bet.
And this last one was like, I got the five AM, the like, delay, and then was it seven, oh, we're closing for the day. Felt so bad for the superintendent, that was.
It was an easy one overall. But it was the most difficult feature as far as timing of the storms. And the changing of the forecast, the stream and storm, roads were fine at five AM, um, as you were.
Yeah.
And by seven AM, uh-oh, we're getting six hours of freezing rain, we're gonna leave the two inches of snow on the road, or we're gonna have a sheet of ice on. So. Yeah, and people did not understand. No, and, and, and the safest roads you can have is slushy, sloppy roads, rather than you pull them off, and you have clear ice everywhere, you can't even, we can't even get around. So anyways.
Right.
Um, I have all the facts and figures, we have seven different color paints, and I have the other gallons. Ball field, roads, and.
No, what brand of print paint?
Three different brands.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we have to procure it, so we have to different, different manufacturers each year. Alright, well, thank you for having me, um, I actually have six budgets, there's five listed on the agenda. One's very small, uh, but the last line versus enterprise fund should be revolving funds.
Right.
I have two small revolving funds, so water and sewer are the enterprise funds. Um, so a quick overview of the department, especially for those of you who are new, um we have ten divisions in the DPW that's under myself. I have sixty-six staff members under myself. Um, so sixty-seven people in ten different functions, anywhere from construction landscaping, to trees, to plumbing, to electrical, as you know, the department touches everyone in the city. So with that being said, uh, also, uh, to lead into my budgets, that I have actually three unions that work under, under my toolage. Uh, you have the SSCA Union, Supervisors Union, you have the, the General DPW Union, and, and I have a Central May, it's just so, three union contracts, and as it leads into my budget, most of my increases in my budget were, were all in my, you'll see the five-one-one-ones on the end of, in five-one-two-nine, so on and so forth, and the overtime. Most everything that increased in my budgets, my budgets increased anywhere from three percent to, I think, one was twelve percent. Um, but the twelve percent was a smaller budget, um, so it increased more with the salaries. So in order to make, meet the three union obligations, um, you'll see that the most, mostly my increases were in my salary line items, a few uh, maintenance parts, pieces, uh material supplies, so on and so forth, increased quite a bit. And again, we put these numbers together from October through January, and costs have gone up even further, as we had talked about, uh, my capital. At both city council, in ways and minims. Uh so, all the moving parts have intended for moving divisions, as I call it. Uh, we have to meet safety standards, licensing, uh, EPA, DEP regulations that are ever-changing, it seems like daily something. Uh, nothing's ever free, uh, it, it usually means another expense. Um, and we, we fall under OSHA standard now also, not just um, uh, DLS, so. Um, so there's, there's a lot of training, um, most of my line items, you'll see that, um training, obviously, we have federal licenses, we have a random drug testing program, that's increased pretty significantly the last two years. And the amount of staff, percentage of staff we have to do yearly has increased under the federal standard, so everything also, everything we do in my, my automatic increases are, are regulations, standard, federal law, batch general law, so on and so forth. Um so some of the, the budget line items, um first I wanted to say about that extra month with the budget, I, I kind of agree with it, because I have things that I don't get information from other communities. I don't get the number until I got it two weeks ago, and the budget flows in January. Uh, we're way short in sludge money this year, already in the sewer budget, but I really like that extra month, because it gets an opportunity for me to get other, other estimates, and are more more accurate estimates from back in the fall, going into the holidays, things have changed quite a bit. Uh, for the most part, I think we're gonna be okay. Uh so, the, the general budget, again, um, I believe it was like a five percent increase, five point eight four, eight four percent increase. Um, you'll, you'll find that, um, some of it's contractable. Uh, we're at our fourth year of our trash contract out of the five-year contract, and that increases so much, so much per year, percentage-wise, or, or I should say, per ton. Uh, we're also in our fourth year of a five-year recycling contract, but as you all know, that will be changing going forward. So those are, those are things in the cap landfill, second, uh, third-party inspection and reporting to DEP has increased. Um, line painting, we're, we're talking the center lines and the edge lines, the contracted, where they come in in the truck, with the truck in the middle of the night. Has, has, has gone up close to fifty percent in three years. Uh, it used to be a twenty-three thousand dollar budget, I'm sitting at forty-five in this budget, and I just found out I don't have enough, so uh, there's just a few things we can't do, but we, we do everything consistently related. Um, some of that has been added bike lanes, so on and so forth, uh, that we have to maintain for. That's not, that's something, yeah, it's not, uh worthwhile, or it can't make machinery wise, you guys can't do it in-house, it's lack of manpower, you saw, like the double yellow lines? That you got a guy comes yeah, there's, there's actually uh, three guys, two guys on the truck, one in the back running the guns, and one kind of drives. Uh, so again, a, a paint truck, we could only use it in the summer, I'm not sure what we can convert it to year-round, so it would sit. Uh, same with our sweeping contract, our sweeping contract has stayed pretty, pretty good, I've had an increase a little bit, but uh, sweepers are very, very high maintenance, uh, extremely high maintenance to the point where I think it's for thirty-six thousand a year, we're better off just contracting it, uh. Again, the, the sweeper wouldn't sit year-round, but it would sit.
Right, there's one round in sweeping, right, am I right?
Yes, and then, and years ago, it got cut from the whole city when we used sand.
Okay.
Now it's been cut to what we call the inner, inner urban district.
Is that like Q and ninety-one?
It's like Silver Street to, to Mill Street, to uh, Coal Rain Road to uh, High Street, it's like the inner urban district, not the business district. Urban, uh, district.
Everything south.
Silver, silver north.
Okay, and Silver North isn't done.
No, I'm saying Silver is your like north boundary.
Yes, yes.
And so, just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but.
No, it's okay.
As far as, what would it, what's the difference as far as cost, and it's a lot more miles of road, I would imagine, and so would it, like, double the cost, triple it, like?
Trying to remember, because I'm the one that had to do the, the change on this, so supervisor, but I think it's gonna close to double.
Okay.
Because you got a lot of road mileage out there.
Right, and if you were peep country, right, yeah.
Yeah, um, and when, when we went to just straight salt and pre-treatment, and, you know, calibrating the trucks and everything, it really cut back on. I mean, you remember years ago, there was an inch of sand on, on both sides, so, um, which by the way, isn't real good for our drainage system. A lot of it ends up in there, so.
Alright.
Catch twenty-two, you got salt moving in there too, and it's concrete, but.
Right.
So that was about seven, eight years ago, we, we made the change. So again, I, I'll take any questions on any of the lines, um.
Do you wanna just go like, it makes sense, you guys, do you wanna go to by department?
Yeah.
Central maintenance and. You wanna, I think it's all.
Not right at, uh. What is this, admin and engineering?
That's the general DPW. So our time one thirty-one.
One thirty-two or.
I, I know, but it, it actually makes sense. So another thing I really liked how the budget book was broken down this year is how. You can see like the, the lines and the blocks here of say what, what each division increased like in salaries and so on and so forth. Um, and it gives a percentage. So the, the first lines, the, uh, is engineering and admin. So basically, it's all of our salaries on the, and on the, um, admin, admin side. Um, engineering contracted services, you know, engineering materials, so on and so forth. Um, you'll, you'll see that most of them were level funded. I did bump up the engineering contracted services because we have a few more things.
I'm missing an agreement.
Uh, that would be, um. Yeah, gotta be halfway down. I increased it to twenty-nine thousand because we're gonna have to do some, some separate permitting, environmental permitting, we didn't know about the, the, the dam. On Mill Street, but I was able to pop it in the budget because the capital had closed, so. Uh, and then again, the engineering is for, and, and when it comes to engineering, a lot of EPA and DEP requirements. A lot of what they're asking, we get surveys of both the water and sewer budgets. They, what they do is, uh, they, they ask for a third-party consultant firm analysis on just about everything. So we could have four PEs in the office, but they're still gonna want, uh, third-party on a lot of these things these days.
I guess, just a, uh, I don't know, if we wanna call housekeeping. I know in years past, we would have, this, these parts seem to be the only places that are missing. I mean, we've got the, the blanket, what was twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and you can kind of see the, the trends of total. But I do know that one, one thing, I, we at least, I think, used to have it one year look back, at least on what. The requests were or the approved were on the year before, right? So like we would have seen like, like, right now, it looks like you never had any engineering contracted services, no tuition, these would all be increases.
Right.
Whereas, um.
Right.
Almost being able to see where those.
Those costs. It was labeled actual, or what, actually.
Right, you'd see like FY twenty-three, get in an actual.
It should be.
Yeah.
I agree. And it will be. If this is extraordinarily difficult to make that change, but I totally agree with you. I'm happy to get that page for you, for the other one, if you want. Do you wanna see that?
Sure, why not, if you got it.
What does she mean by the other, she has like another budget?
Mayor's budget.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You feel special.
That was just, it was just something that I noticed that was a difference in, it wasn't really actually ten.
If it was added to what they had changed for this year, is that, is that what you're getting at, if that was on another line?
Yeah, almost like the same way we see the, the, the actuals from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four on the totals, we used to see that break down. We'd see like engineering contract services from twenty twenty-four year.
So we changed the entire format.
Right, okay.
So that was, but that needs to be in there from here on out. You're right. The thing is, we never knew how many people were from everything, remember?
Right, right, no, this is, that's what I mean, this is.
So this is. Yes, this is the organizational chart.
It's from last year.
This is last year, organizational chart, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you. Do you, do you mind that I went to get this? I just wanted to show them. Is this what page you wanted to see?
Pretty much.
Okay, you can pass that, I actually have more copies of it, maybe I should go get it.
Always ask that, I have a question, it's not a big number, I'm not even concerned about the number, I'm just curious what. I imagine it's like. Print it up, I mean, that, is that, is that the, um, advertising number, is that?
No, well, that, that, that'll, that's split up amongst all the water facilities and the drinking water budget, which is further down. The advertising. Yeah, so our advertising in the general budget here is, is we do. We do just about every bit of procurement for every DPW project, all these great projects and, and greater appropriations we receive. We have an in-house procurement personnel at Torog, who's retiring in January and we're training an assistant engineer for procurement now, but. He puts out at least thirty bids a year on all these.
So that's a big.
So, so, yeah, and it's like, I think it's like my eight hundred dollars per advertisement under procurement, you have to advertise it.
Yeah, yeah, newspaper.
Yeah, we have to advertise under, under DEP and, and under grant application, we have to advertise our recycling with our flyers. Advertising, I've been short for quite a few years, I've just been forgetting to bump that up, but I did this year. So we've been really short, so.
Oh, it's fine, I have one at home.
You may have already said this in forgiveness, but the, um, deputy director position, it's a point three three. And is that, that's full-time equivalent, right, and so is that somebody has another job with the DPW in addition to being?
No, you, you'll see point three three on four of my, four of my.
Yeah.
So point three three is they are split in the water. Enterprise fund, separate budget.
Thank you.
This guy loves my thirds, but.
I, now that I get it, it makes sense.
Technically, I probably should be point three three, but I'm, I'm, I'm just all admin, so.
So who gets to point three four, somebody's gotta.
It's three, three, three repeating.
Sweet, someone's gotta have that.
Yeah, somebody said that, actually, no, I'm not shorting my staff.
So that, those salaries are really triple what they are listed.
Correct, yeah, you'll see the same thing deputy director when we get in the water and the sewer, it'll be point three.
And, um, this is really just a more general budget question, but revolving funds, I find to be kind of inexplicable. Because they're basically user fee, you know, it seems like they're user fee based, like enterprise funds, but they're not enterprise funds.
Correct, my revolving fund, so my, my tran, the, our transfer station. Uh, I have a solid waste budget, uh, and I also have a revolving fund, because we take in funds at the window. We sell window decals, uh, pay as you throw trash bags, stickers. So it's a revolving fund, the money has to come back into that fund, but it also staffs two of my eight employees up there. So it funds two employees with fringe and all the unique contractual obligations. Uh, and, and at the end of the year, when that's all paid out, uh, whatever's left over retires to the general fund.
Enterprise, it just lives in enterprise?
So if it was an enterprise, everything would retire, retire to the enterprise fund.
Right.
And those funds would be able to be utilized by myself, like we use water enterprise and sewer enterprise.
Funds, right.
Well, they're enterprise, so that's, that's how we bought the PACO.
Right, right.
They come out of enterprise, we paid cash because consider it like our savings account. Solid Waste Department or the Transfer Station isn't set up like that, it retires to the general fund and it, it goes to, I mean, it actually goes towards my general budget. The following year or.
Right, right, right.
General budget.
Okay, that's really helpful, because I was looking at it in the budget book and I was like, okay, this is interesting, but that's clarifying.
Right, so, so there, and I don't know what page it's on, but there is an explanation. In one page of the budget book, on what the differences between the funds are, and I just wanna tell you this myself, the first time. When I was working on the budget, I'm sorry for interrupting you, if I was, but, um. I found that very difficult to know what was the difference between a revolving fund and an enterprise fund, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I think, um, I'm just gonna paraphrase, but I think the best way to think of it is, it's a, it's a. It's a fund that everything is, it's all inclusive from what is charged, like your water, paper, your water bills, everything's taken. Everything comes from there, the sewer, the same thing, you get your water sewer and GSET, those are our three enterprise fund and everything. Everything comes from there, the people who work in that department are paid from there, their fringe benefits are paid from there. And then.
Self-sustaining.
Yes, self-sustaining, Marlon's done a great job. With his retained earnings, I just want to say that in the water and sewer, he's increased those so to the point where we are actually able to purchase things. And not have to borrow from the retain, from the retained earnings and water and sewer and, no, promise I'll be quiet. But I didn't. But we do need to look at our water and sewer fund rates, and that will be something that probably we should all have in general. As, you know, as a discussion, this, a formula, and we'll get Angelica, the accountant involved, and I think you all too.
It'll involve Lindsay and I also.
Okay, very good, well, of course.
So last year, we didn't increase the rates because we were able to use retained earnings that we had saved up since two thousand and eighteen. So we didn't have to borrow anything, therefore. We didn't have to increase the rates, another, I, I know we're jumping all over the place here with the budgets, but since we're on the subject, I mean, if it's. Okay with you all. Excuse me, so we're over halfway into the meter replacement program, which is three years behind right now due to COVID. We're trying to get into any houses. Um, we're already seeing the returns on our latest numbers to DEP for what we call unaccounted for water. So we have so much water that, that we produce each year, but we're not getting paid for on, it's not showing up in the, uh, the bill. So we were at twenty-four percent two years ago and DEP, EPA don't like that, or in other words, we're wasting water, where's it going? So when we started the meter program, we had a lot of meters that were approaching thirty years old, now they're brand new. As a water meter gets older, it will give you more water and read less. Um, if that makes sense.
Yes, because mine went from like literally twelve to seventy-two. And I was like, we are not taking more showers, so I'm, it, it's on my, it's on my list of, like, what is going on here that?
So what.
We were using six times as much water.
Right. Where, i- it's measuring it more accurately now with a meter, so, so we're actually. We, we, we kept the rates stagnant last year or at a standstill, only because we were starting to see the returns on that. Because what comes along with an accurate meter is the revenues. So we were able to sustain without raising the rates last year, we are looking at them this year. You know, sewer is one of those things where we're borrowing for INI every year, so. You know, we, we have some borrowing and you saw a couple of financial orders, we're, we're sending some stuff, you know, we're, we're paying down, but we're also borrowing at the same time, so. Um, that would, that's a really important thing for, for, um, the water system, uh, our reporting and everything, because it's more accurate. It, it makes, it makes the EP real happy that we're, we're not just losing water somewhere on. Um, it tells me we don't have any creative leaks out there anymore either, oh, I bet. So, no, I mean, we, we've had our fair share of breaks, we have to estimate what we lose for water and we calculate that into our reporting, but. That's significant for the city when you can drop from twenty-three percent, twenty-three point five percent to, to where we're at. So that, that's a good thing. And it keeps the, it keeps the, the rates down, increase the rates too. I wasn't sure how I wanted to present to you all tonight, you know, line for line, or, um, I have a lot of lines, but I'd, I'd be more than happy to.
I have one question.
Are we still on admin, are we still on admin engineering or?
No, I jumped ahead, so admin and engineering is one division.
What's your question?
Alright.
Go on, the highway.
Everybody okay with admin engineering as far as? Information, okay. So we can move to city yard? There's much, much to say about.
Not much to say.
It's getting repainted.
Looks like it's level funded all the way across, right?
Yes. Yeah. Um, some of this stuff is, is safety gear for the staff, uh, we just put it under yard materials. You know, safety glasses, your protection.
There's a lot of talk in the yard, it looks like.
Yeah. Yard communications, that's all done through IT now, that used to be a line item. You'll see where the drug testing gets hit for one division there, it's five, five thousand, it used to be like two thousand, twenty-five hundred a few years ago. Yard building contracted services at the very top has gone down over the years because we have a central maintenance department. Plumbing, electrical and then the cable heating system problem, uh. We usually probably pay for parts and pieces, but, uh. When we get to central maintenance, they, they service the whole city also, the schools, so.
Now you got the HVAC person.
We're working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not yet.
But, I mean, I see a lot of people. They go into that field, I would think that. You just can't find the right person or?
Well, we had, we had four or five applicants we interviewed and, and as we got through the process, we found that they didn't. They didn't have the right qualifications. And they'd have to become like a plumber, gas fitter before they can become an HVAC tech, so. There's this really wonky at the state level, how these licenses line up and qualifications and the amount of years they get the licenses. Or water and wastewater licenses like that, takes three years to get the licenses we need in our great system, so.
That's a pretty, uh. High-paying job as well, and I know when you get somebody with all those licenses, you're gonna pay them well.
Yes, yeah. Wastewater operators carry six licenses down there, so. And of course, uh, TCH is every year technical contact hours, keep those licenses up and get them renewed through the state.
TCH is?
Technical contact, uh, technical contact hours, training contact hours. So they have to have so many hours per license in a two-year cycle. If they don't have them, they don't get their license renewed and they're not qualified to, to work on our water and sewer systems, this is one example. So.
So you're not just getting an HVAC guy, you got, he's got a.
Well, yeah, I mean, that person has to have the qualifications. You know, it doesn't, I mean, we, obviously, we can't hire two to train one and then we're gonna have two of something, so. Uh, it's, it's pretty convoluted, we had some good candidates, um, and they're working on those other qualifications, but. We don't have an HVAC tech for some of those candidates to work under to get the rest of their hours to be fully licensed, so that's kind of what we ran up.
So Kevin and I are a master, but all you had was apprentices.
Right, right. Um, you'll see, uh, you'll actually see some of the divisions, the, uh, the overall salaries may have gone down a little bit, we, we have had to turn over. And you have. Uh, I'm, I'm just saying in general, um, like highway staff has gone down from a few years ago, but as far as the salaries. Because we've had a turnover of bidding into other jobs or retirements, so on and so forth, so they're a lower pay grade, lower pay. So some of the salaries, it didn't look like they got the raise like everyone else, but they did, it's just their.
No longevity.
Yeah, the longevity, yes, that was a big one. So.
Question about the sidewalk, material sidewalk line on one thirty-five here. It's flat out, and I imagine that, that's not all we're spending on sidewalks in the city.
No way.
Is this like the pieces of wood for the concrete or something, like what is?
Yeah, we, I mean, we do, we do quite a bit at, uh, in-house sidewalk.
Right.
Not like the contractor can fly through it like they are, um, but we have what we call an in-house sidewalk list.
Yep.
That we work on, there, there's some that are blacktop that need to be overlaid, if you will, uh. There's other materials we need when we do sidewalks, um, you know, floats, so on and so forth.
I'm not familiar with, with the word float means.
Well, they're actually the hand tools, the floating concrete.
Oh, that's the.
Finish it properly, yeah, there's four or five different tools you need to pour a sidewalk. And two-by-fours and two-by-sixes and pins and so on and so forth.
So a lot of it is contracted out, is that?
Yeah, I mean, a majority of it, um, we've got close to a million dollars of sidewalk happening. You know, it, it's the same with the two water mains we replaced in the last year, the, the company, they got the bid, all they do, they're not a general contractor, all they do is water mains.
They're super specialized.
And I mean, they were done a mul pod road, I was like.
Yeah.
This is gonna be full of leaks, how they possibly move that fast and. And did a great job and they just, the same company did Nash's Mill, that was pretty quick hanging pipe from the bridge.
I was impressed with that.
Yeah.
Where do those numbers live in the budget, are they under the DPW budget as far as like contracted sideways?
So that, that's all capital, and it's a combination of, we got a mod grant. We, we got a mod grant for part of it, some of it is CDBG funding.
Okay.
Cause it falls within parameters, yes, uh, and then I had a hundred and thirty-six thousand from two capital seasons ago. That's added in there also, so added up close to a million dollars.
That's right.
Between now and fall, there'll be another round of sidewalks happening in the fall, so.
May I? And just if you don't know, M O D, that's Mass Office on Disability. That's that grant and the C D B G's community block grant funds.
Yeah.
Disability uh fund is the stuff by the hospital, right?
Yes, we applied for grants in Mass Office on Disability. We applied uh two years ago, didn't get it. Last year we applied and got it. It could have turned.
Yes, I believe Beacon Street in that area was the mod grant. Yeah. Um, and then plus we we grabbed a few other spots that we felt we needed bring up to to uh accessibility A D A compliance, like on uh not School Street, but Main Street. There's a few intersection. You had there that didn't meet the requirement. Uh, so they're jumping around a little bit, but they're also addressing some of the the A D A issues and 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 the complaints that we've had over the years, which is finally good to get to some of these things. It's it's all good. Just what we needed, a big shot in the arm with sidewalks right now.
Down here, uh traffic division. I'm assuming you replaced somebody, somebody retired. Uh, I mean, because that was salary dropped uh four percent.
Yes, uh, actually, the the person who was in that position had actually got the D P W. And he reapplied and came back in another position. So uh somebody with less seniority is in that position.
Okay, I figured it was.
Yeah, that was one of these examples. I was saying some of the numbers went down. Not significantly, but they went down. And just a note on the highway traffic, it's showing one staff member here, but highway traffic is actually uh one division at this point in time. So there's actually two that are staffed up there during the day, but it's a combination of seven people, traffic combined together. We didn't put the budgets together only because it's good fact, the contractor paint, you know, it's it's I can track what we uh spend on paint, like in the parks budget for the schools, you know, because we we prep all the athletic fields for all the sports. So for tracking purposes, we left it separated out just so we can for data, if I was ever asked, like a track it. And you'll see in all all these lot, all these sections, you'll see the clothing allowance, you'll see, uh, you know, the drug testing, you'll see the the T C H is or or the it'll say tuition, so on and so forth.
Sir, we need to go to one of these. We've got a question about the road here.
Um, if I if I could just comment on the service division a little bit, uh, especially for the new counselors. So our our vehicle maintenance division, service division, uh we you you'll see in other small departments like rec, uh, building inspection, so on and so forth. The smaller departments don't have anything in their lines for fuel, vehicle maintenance, repairs, so on and so forth. That's included in my budget. We take care of the small departments and and we pay for all of that for them. We also service the schools, every one of their vehicles. We service and do repair for the schools.
Even those little mini vans?
Yes, yes, all them Hondas. So and then we also service police and fire. So we service, we service, actually, we service every city entity, including G S A. Service and repair. Once in a while we have to send something out because we're either swamped or or we're just not capable of doing a repair. Specialized equipment we use one time doesn't make sense. It would be very expensive. So um, but I wanted everybody to know that we we take care of this city. We keep everybody rolling. A little difficult in D P W keeping things rolling lately, but um I heard the analogy earlier about flying the plane and building it at the same time. We're rebuilding a recycling process. We're we're driving it. So um I think I like that.
For Millennium Falcon, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Only if our Tinder.
I I do have a question because it's on the yes, the school budget, they have a line item that says ga- uh under uh the transportation gas and refast GPS vehicles of uh a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, so we 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 let me rephrase everything. We provide a labor for all the repairs. So parts, parts, pieces, lubricants, fuel, it's all done through transfers. We pay for everything upfront.
And then they.
All does a great job of tracking what goes where. We got great software for that. So at the end of the month, we may do a transfer for twenty six thousand dollars for the school department for gasoline. They'll get the transfer. I sign off on it. They sign off and it comes back in our budget. So it revolves, but um, yeah, just to be clear, I mean, we we take care of all of our equipment comes out of the budget, but most maintenance repairs come out of except for the small departments. The small departments don't get get built.
That's everything except for public safety, schools. Are those considered small departments?
No.
G set. Oh, G set is awesome. Is are they small enough? They well, they got a fleet.
Well, G sets got like four vehicles, uh, but schools, they got a pretty good fleet, I forgot the number, but our D P Ws have that too. So about sixty five vehicles. With small equipment. They service all the small equipments and all those, so on and so forth, so. I guess that wasn't a quick comment, but.
Yeah. It's okay. I have a question. Speaking of that, Scott, um the parks division. Guys, we much maintain the swimming pool, right?
Yes.
So two questions about that. That all the income from the G D O N stand, the concession stand up there. That all goes to uh goes to the rec, they're revolve. That's actually pays our staff.
Okay.
Yeah. And when we get a flood, you got ten thousand dollars here for materials, right, for uh swimming pool? Swimming area, I'm assuming? Could you remind me what that number is when that floods out and you have to replace all that sand? Find that first, you know what?
So sand has gone up generally if we have to replace the full amount of sand. Sometimes we lose it all. Other times we lose half of it. So we're investing anywhere from four thousand to seven thousand in hauling beach sand in. We have to get some stone dust to rest the driveway up, scrape the the mud off, obviously. Uh, the playground, all the playgrounds get specialized wood chips uh yearly. Those get ruined enough blood, so we gotta scrape them, you know, the top layer up and and refreshing it with with certified wood chips, as they call them. So yeah, there's a lot going on down there. And this budget also covers our tree tree room, so.
I thought I thought the amount was bigger than that for some reason. This the sands replaced sand.
I really enjoy that they're called certified wood chips. Like, that's great. Wood chips that have their licenses and their hours.
Yeah. But I mean, I I guess it makes sense. You could get wood chips from anybody that have bolts. It could have.
Yeah.
Metalene, it could have anything through that shredder. So these these go through a separate operation under the big magnets.
It's like a nut free facility.
Yeah, yeah. Now, some of these fluctuate from year to year. There's ten thousand in swim area materials, but I also have town parks property materials with eighteen in it. Some years I don't spend near the eighteen, other other years I do. So if we get two floods down there, we sometimes can make do. This particular budget is really tough this year. We flooded three times since the current budget. That the current budget we're in. Twice last July and December, I think. So.
I mean, for sand purposes, you won't do anything over there until like for the beach area. You're not gonna do anything over there until it's like I don't.
It's pretty close. Um, so so the rector after Christine Moore, she has a few rentals in mid to late May. But June, the first week of June, June first is always the target to open in my experiences. So last couple of weeks of May, we start working on it because you never know, you might get sixty something. I'll be able to get everything fixed up, but we just haven't gotten to doing any of the repairs on this spring. We've been pretty short, so. But it's on our radar.
Oh, we had landfall, waste collection.
It is a revolving fund. I'm trying to. Where it is in this.
Wait.
In the very back.
Oh, no.
Okay, I remember reading about.
Forty two.
Yep. So how does the revolving funds for the trash? Uh, so that's the trash stickers and such. How does that? Or how much does that offset the waste collection cost? I know it doesn't cover the whole thing because there's a couple of different sections. You know what I'm asking?
Well, yeah, if you put the the window stickers together, the the sale of the the bag, the trash stickers, if you will. Um, if you take it on the window, I didn't bring those figures with me, but uh I can certainly, if you want, I might give you a couple of your look back on that. Uh, but at the end of the day, you're correct. When you look at the solid waste budget and staffing with six people, right, six folks in there, they're fringe and everything. No, it doesn't offset it a hundred percent.
But it's not.
Um, but most years it's close. And then I had to raise some fees two budgets ago.
Okay.
Only because we weren't, we weren't breaking even. I mean, the ultimate goal, at least in my experience here, is always for the greenfield residents, everything costs money to get rid of today. Uh, tra- trash is taken for granted. Everybody thinks the trash wise is so expensive for trash, it's expensive to it's gonna tip trash down over him, straight field or wherever. So.
It doesn't go away.
Yeah. Uh, so we do raise the fees down and 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 by the way, I mean, even our our window detail to get in was well below other transfer stations. Most of them start at seventy five dollars a year. Four twenty. So and and our our per bag cost is pretty reasonable compared to most communities too. So.
It pays you go. That's about seven hundred thousand. Is that right?
I believe, yes.
That's right, seven hundred thousand. And we were at three fifty eight. No. Three forty two halfway through. Yeah, we budgeted for seven hundred thousand.
Okay.
Or people will throw trash in the sun.
I have no doubt.
Well, you got the spring cleaning is a real thing. We all do it. In fact, this coming month, May, we're we're gonna be busy up there. The lines will be out the gate on a Saturday morning. Everybody does their spring cleaning up, but.
It makes a ton of sense. It sounds something I really had.
So when I look at my budget, I look at my budget six months in.
Yeah.
It's and I can't say I'm gonna have lots of trash on the bottom line.
Right.
Because you get the fluctuation.
Got it.
In recycling, we really get get hit hard these holidays.
Tons of cardboard, I would imagine.
Yeah, it takes weeks to catch up, folks putting that out.
Yeah.
Now, well, you think of all of us at home, you know, I mean, we put more out, so.
Right.
Uh, so it fluctuates, but I I have a pretty good, I've done it enough years, I have a pretty good idea, you know, where the budget's at, the kind of flows in my own mind. Lot of moving parts.
And he's just curious, where does it get uh? Where was the seven hundred thousand?
Double that.
This was, I I asked when I was trying to do the recap, I asked Angelica printed this out for me, which I'm happy to pass around. I think it could make me extra coffee. This is where we are. Probably need to magnify.
Where are my glasses?
Where we, I get where we, you said we're at three hundred something, but you said we budgeted seven hundred?
We guess, we make an estimate for what your receipts will be for this year for pay as you throw. And, you know, we guess, we make an estimate. I guess, I call it a guess.
Based on past years.
Seats, you're guessing are gonna be seven hundred thousand.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, I was looking at like, there's not seven hundred thousand.
Our revenue, revenues are the window stickers, the
Right.
the the window fees.
Right.
Um, and so on and so forth. That goes into the ball.
Right.
But I have a separate budget. If you're talking about the trash contract, that goes up every year because the contract is up.
That is literally disposing of the trash. It's seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought when you said that, I thought you were talking about you, the budget for the cost of running it, not the receipts. So that's what I.
Do you remember last year when we were doing, trying to find the extra money?
Yeah.
I I remember saying, I think that we're low. I think that we're low on estimating receipts in many different departments. And I I looked and the year before we were, you know, up five hundred thousand from, you know, obviously, uh, because we are twenty uh.
Three.
We we're we're not done with. But um but the last one that we finished, we were five hundred thousand from the year before. So it was, that was a good guess.
Yeah, I I know during during COVID, um, we started paying for recycling, most of it. I know that sounds crazy. But the the market fell apart. We had COVID. But what we increased was a monumental amount of cardboard. Amazon's still delivering. And we're still seeing large increases in cardboard. So.
Is it cardboard a commodity of sorts? I mean, you actually get paid the corrugated, corrugated.
We we had, you're you're correct. We had a bailer up the transfer station. We used to try and bail with cardboard, but we didn't have the staffing to constantly bail cardboard. Uh, and then we had three, three um three companies that were purchasing it and all of a sudden, we didn't get paid a couple of times. Our bailer broke down. It was gonna cost a lot of money. Uh, what they use it for, a lot of recycled cardboard is used for uh reused for cereal boxes.
So do you think in the long run, is it worth getting that equipment up and running?
Well, with the new Swiffer grant, that bailer has to go, so we have the the facility space. But again, taking it to Berlin, taking it to the new facility, they recycle, they have more recycling.
I'm sorry, but I met a uh uh it was a small town on the shore when I went to the MMA conference. I asked everybody about single and double stream recycling. And this she was the chair, she was the president of 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 the sucker. They do single stream with everything except corrugated cardboard and they have a private company that picks that up and it actually pays the town. So I don't know if that's something down the road because, you know.
No, and that's fine. We we've just lost, there's not companies that were responding to us anymore either. Like, they weren't in the area.
Because she said that that it that makes this town, I mean, it's a small town, it's down on the no, no, it's not even, it's like down Plymouth Way, but it doesn't. But um she said the city actually makes money. It's free money. Because it it they don't pay the trucking firm. They trucking firm pays the town. Now, we're on the east coast, you know, it there might be more of those companies out there. Yeah, they they probably have the outlets.
Marlo, I was gonna ask, because I I see in the transfer station, it's a pretty decent increase, thirty seven percent general fund operating.
Forty one.
Page one forty one.
Blocks at the top.
Yep.
What was the percentage?
Just wondering where where those increases are coming from.
Uh, one forty one.
You're going from forty five, seven to sixty two, five.
Pretty different. Uh, we have uh two more pages at the, one more page.
Two more seconds.
The last. There you go. We're going to put a D P W transfer station. So a lot of, a lot of the thirty percent, thirty seven percent increase was was probably the increase if I'm remembering correctly, to the trash contract on the recycling.
Okay. Thank you.
Would be a good portion of that. Um, and I increased, I increased some other services up there because we've been running into some failures with equipment and whatnot that I've budgeted for in the past. And so I'm going negative in one line, then you you don't want to spend in others because you you gotta be balanced on.
Yeah, there's last years.
So I, yeah, I needed to add, I needed to add a few things in, like you'll see on the capital landfill, I increased some stuff on that, even though we're having that in contracted repairs, we're having other little washouts and things that we can handle in-house, but special sand, special equipment put on that thing. wash outs and things that we can handle in-house, but special sand, structural equipment put on that thing, there's a lot that goes along with it. Ends up quite.
Just the verification, or the, the, pretty much everything there is the same, except for the contracted services was 15 last year. So it's 30 now. So it's like, I think what he's saying is.
Oh, yeah, that's the difference.
From the contract, that's like almost, it's almost identical last year, except for that.
For that to double. It's just interesting too, because it's 22 was, it stayed pretty flat for a couple of years and then. Yeah.
Yes. Oh, I can, I can tell you what the, while there was one larger increase, and that was the, on the tip floor, there's a big metal edge that's molded into the concrete. And it's worn out and the metal edge is flipped up. And that's going to be like a, if I remember correctly, like a $20,000 repair. They got to come in, cut the concrete, reset the the metal edge. If not, we're going to keep destroying that.
That's like an L, like a.
Yeah, it's angle iron, but it's real thick and it's real. We did it probably 10 years, 12 years ago. You get about 12 years out of it. A lot of stuff's being pushed over that edge, so. That that was a major increase. I put it in the budget because it'd be me capital of 25 grand, so I built it in the budget. It's 20 grand, so.
Well, that makes sense.
Hmm.
What's going on? This is not a question I expect you to answer. It's 2015, 2016. I think the city yard had higher numbers. Same thing with the transfer station. Again, I higher numbers as far as expenditures. It's just that you got like closer to 60. City yard, it's like.
Then starting to be level funded?
Yeah, just interesting. This is in that.
He's showing from back there. That's the transfer station.
Ten years ago. Yeah, again, it doesn't matter in our context. I really don't expect an answer.
It's going to put me to my.
I'm sorry to ask.
Pretty much remember most of my career here, but it had to been something.
There was an incident.
Yeah.
I don't know, the cemetery?
We maintain the, yeah, well, yes, the Federal Street Cemetery and there's on Duniston Road. And then we also do some work at the cemetery down out at Coop Valley. Those are three of your.
Yeah.
We mow, mow, we whack, maintain the fences, so on and so forth. Yeah, it's a small budget, but sometimes I I overspend the budget when we have a lot of headstones that are broken. That's pretty expensive to have a company come in, but we we try and keep up on that to maintain those.
And start doing feet for service, start doing some burials.
Well, you know, that's funny. That's strange. When I had my, my steeplejack company, I did town hall at Town of Hempstead on Long Island, which encompasses most of Nassau County. And we redid their tower and belfry, gilded the dome. And the DPW director told me, he said, there's only two things that we make money on. The municipal golf course. And the municipal cemetery. That's all right. Everything else just goes out, you know?
Yeah.
Except for taxes, of course, they go probably.
We're going to have a new backhoe so we can dig some.
I I think, as a matter of fact, the Federal Street Cemetery, I think most of the plots were already sold. And a lot of them that are still up on top have to be dug by hand. I used to dig them in Shelburne, a little cemetery by hand, because the plots were so close together. You couldn't get a machine in there, you know, obviously we don't want to disturb anything else. So yes, my, well, not to be personal, the one of the families in the Federal Street Cemetery.
Okay, so my fundraising scheme is ended here?
No, it's it's a good idea.
I appreciate it.
We were approached at one point years ago of of another cemetery that was having a lot of trouble, but it didn't, it didn't come to fruition for the city.
Well, I I think it's huge. Empty. Lot. Started a one. I mean, it's not like you go out of business, you know, I mean. Can't be, get over business.
All right, all right. On the single maintenance. Yeah. Get right over.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah. Already talked about street cleaning. Cemetery, you got it.
Through sand and areas, just to.
Back to central.
That was a good job.
Page is that again? 91. Thank you.
Oh, wow, way back.
Yeah, I could.
Whoa.
One.
Because this is a I look forward to the version of this with a table account.
Central maintenance, I see.
Yeah, so this this budget is pretty straightforward. The percentage increase doesn't look obviously isn't as high because we have an electric, we have two electricians, a plumber, three full-time custodians and a part-time custodian. And of course, if we hire an HVAC tech, along with the facilities manager at the top. But again, they're unionized also. Both the DPW union and the central maintenance unions fall under this piece. It was great that they listed that.
Yeah.
For everyone.
It is good.
So salaries increased per order of the union contract. There was a couple other fringes added, added in for the central maintenance personnel in the, in the last contract negotiation. Really, the the, one of the biggest increases is probably actually, there's no real huge increases. I had to bump a few things. Maybe the library I bumped a little bit for the simple fact that larger facility, it takes more cleaning supplies, so on and so forth than the last library.
That was my question. The custodians rotate around all the city buildings. Is that the deal?
They're, they're assigned certain buildings, but when one takes a vacation, then all of them kind of rotate to cover the one.
Yeah.
That, yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
There's a, there's a, there's a schedule, a weekly thing they they do.
The one part-time custodian is 24 hours at the police department. Then we have three full-time. They cover the rest of the city buildings. And we also cover all the, all the facilities at Vets Field. And the, you know, the bathrooms and the sure, we're getting the boiler change out, Vets Field. And we maintain all the fields there too.
Do you think, not to get anybody upset, I know you're a former jock and stuff, do you think that that that's field locker rooms have to be retired someday or decommissioned? Do you think it's going to last forever or?
No, it's, it's not going to last forever. As a matter of fact, you'll see a little bit different working five-year capital coming up next year because it needs, it needs repair. It's to the point where I'm I'm not saying we knock it down at this point.
Talking about the field house?
Yeah, the actual field house where the locker room is.
Like 70,000 dollars.
The wooden structure that was added on to it is in really bad shape. Obviously, it's not, there's a heat efficient, it's an old brick building. There's no insulation there, but.
You're talking the old garage where the batting tunnel is inside.
Yes, where they store equipment. Yes. That's in pretty rough shape.
Yeah.
Because the school has locker rooms. The showers. I mean, you have to walk a little bit, but you know, the old days, everybody did that.
Yeah.
Reaches, I wonder, Rees was about the only school I can think of that has a field house.
Yeah. But that was there before the school was there.
Oh, okay.
There's a long history there. It was donated from the vets.
Yeah.
And all that. So, so we maintain, we maintain all the sports, all the sports schedules and everything in Vets Field. Actually, all the school sports, all the schools, we maintain and prepare fall fields for for all the sports. But everything inside of Vets Field, we basically maintain, but they got strong boosters that donate for things too. But Vets Field, it's, it's predominantly used by the high school. High school sports, some middle school sports use it. But it's always been in my budget. We maintain everything.
Football baseball?
Yeah. Legion ball.
Softball.
Yeah. I asked myself right here.
I just have to say one thing on this. This would be a very good topic for everyone when we're talking with schools, et cetera. I just went down to watch a ballgame. They need new lights, which would be, and the lights are for the kids that play sports, would be covered a couple hundred thousand dollars. And although it's fascinating to me, the city owns that part. But that's, you know, like, I imagine schools paid for the uniforms. I think sharing the expense for the lights or something might be something to be considered.
There are some public sports that go on. You got the Bay Ruth League.
I was going to say the Bay Ruth.
Have, what is it, the Bulldogs, really little players in the fall. Yeah.
Most of the place.
But the light system, that was put up all under donations.
I was going to say it was boosters.
Yeah, and it needs, it needs about 20,000 in repairs right now.
Because we kind of find out when that, I worked for the straight, but yeah, there's a cutoff date before. With some, I think it's a state's going to require LED lamps?
Yes, and and as a matter of fact.
Like a new, like a quarter of a million dollars. Whereas if you use the the bulbs.
I I haven't, I haven't.
25,000, right? Right. If you beat the deadline, you might be able to get away with.
I haven't been able to catch up with Carol. She's been very busy. I've been very busy, but there may be some grant opportunities along the lines at some point.
Yes, because then you'll get a.
Especially if it's for school sports, that that opens up another avenue of of possible grant money. So, but as it sits now, I think I have a quote for 18,000 to get what we have there up and running. The old sodium lights and they got ballast and everything. They really should be upgraded LED at some point.
So, moving away from sports. I just noticed a a big difference between the department budget and the mayor's budget on the line item, this miscellaneous town meeting contingent service.
Yeah, I can explain.
Town hall, so.
Mayor will take it away and you can add on after.
The mayor's whacking.
That was, that was, so it was 33,000 cut from the budget. I think that's what you're indicating. So 20,000 was to to repair the lights. We just talked about it.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm bringing sports back.
Okay.
And then 13,000 was the original quote to redo the clerk's office downstairs. To reset properly, reset that rock ceiling. And mayor, if I may, the reason it was come out of the operating is there may be some other funds or at some point or whatnot.
We had to take, there are many things you'll see there, there would be expense lines on different budgets, so that's going to come up again. So we actually talked to all the department heads because we are totally up against it this year.
Yeah.
So some of that will be paid probably one time out of the clutch from, from APA, I think. It was like a one-time expense for something like bulbs or something that we could pull out that was a legitimate expense because we weren't going to make it on the operating side. So every department has it. It's not that it's gone. It's that it's going to be paid from a different source. I think it's 135,000. I, it's the, that's not subject to appropriation, but I always tell you whatever it is that you answered, there's something so many people's budgets, so I'll just say that the next time when you're asking. That's where it's coming from.
No, that's just helpful because I know generally you're trying to save expenses and you can't always get what you want.
Yeah, and then what we had to have a balanced budget, that's, is what the mayor was saying too. They have to hit that number, so.
You guys are doing a great job. You know, and there's so many departments and so many things you're doing and so much you got to balance and flip and do and that, you know? You don't hear a lot of complaints, other than the snowstorms, the occasional flood. You don't hear a lot of complaints about the DPWs.
Yeah, we.
So it's nice to know that you're doing your job and under the radar.
Yeah, well, I I think there's been some pretty good press on the DPW. I think, you know, a lot of things happen behind the scenes. You know, we, we just, we take it for granted. It's what we do. But I can tell you the staff loves to, loves to hear the good stuff. Especially with short staffed and then they all seem to find a way. Now we're lacking in some maintenance areas because of it, you know, the stuff you don't see, but I think you'll find yourself a a letter in your email at some point. But that's the kind of staff I have.
That's kind of you to do that. Appreciate that leadership that you went out of your way to tell us.
I I I have to say that I've had a few people tell me I need to take more credit and I don't. I I credit my staff at every city council, meaning they they get the credit. They're the boots on the ground. I direct. I get their money. But at the end of the day, when I build these budgets and I build capital, I get a lot of information from them. I'll be starting in on them in August, they'll wake up. But that's where it all starts for me. It takes a long time to put everything together with all the moving parts that we have, but you know, we got good staff, we got dedicated people. They jump in.
And what you're describing is leadership, you know, like you're describing yourself as leader, because you are, you know? Even if you don't want to take the credit.
Well, I will take the credit for the retained earnings because that was, we were, we were broke when I, when I came back in 2018 and that was like for me, that personally, that was a major accomplishment. We didn't have a bit of trouble when I came back in 18. So. But they get it done, you know, and I tell them all the time.
Did you have any concerns?
Nothing that we haven't talked about. No, I actually thought this was overall. I don't, I will tell you right now, I don't have any concerns with how this turned out. I think it was very well done. You can take credit, some credit.
You know, I think some of you heard me say this, but I don't mind the long meetings. I love this time of year because it's a culmination of a lot of work since August for capital and budgets for for everybody. You know what I do when I get home at 1 a.m. after the budget meeting? I I email all my staff and say, we had a successful night. We didn't, we didn't get caught. We got everything we wanted. Thank you. You know?
Well, you never, you never get everything you wanted, but you know.
It was a good night, you know what I mean? But I don't know. Previous mayors and other people think I'm crazy for loving this time of year. I I truly mean that. This is things are happening. This is where it started. And I don't know if you heard what I said, it's one of these days, one of these meetings, you're going to go go last. It's nice going to end it. How many meetings? Quarter to one, the last vote on the budget and sport? But I I I do appreciate all the support. We have a lot of support out there from the taxpayer. You know, you you, you, you get that compliment now, man, it drives people, you know? I'm old school. I'm going to do a good job. It's it's like getting a pay raise. It's me, so.
I don't know, it's in the mix.
People's pay notes.
Uh, no. It is, we're there every.
I named you Hillside Park.
Oh, wait, does it record any?
I sent him pictures of what the basketball hoops were like.
Oh, yeah.
Coming out, I was afraid somebody would trip. I went back a week later and that was fixed and put in. They, they do fabulous.
It's a very active park. I wish to live over there.
Yeah, actually, several parks are probably active. They each have their trade stuff.
Yeah.
And like a river, you know?
Critical ball.
Critical ball. Softball, baseball.
I think the dog park exists. It's like, not that, yeah, but lots of people use them.
I'm at the dog first, like, yeah.
Our dog is not a, a play nice with other dogs dog, so we, we do not go. She's good most of the time.
Well, some of the, the other amenities that are coming up, and again, we maintain, we maintain all the parks, we maintain all that maintenance, repairs, whatever may happen, whatever breaks, but a lot of the amenities, some of that open space is going to have some small amenities in it. They're going to add other little twists to enjoying the, the rent areas and the parks a little more too, so.
Yeah, all right. Well, I'm going to move on. I'm going to let people go. But I have to announce that our next meeting is a week from today, Tuesday, April 30th at 5:30 here and on City Hall Meeting Room and on Zoom. That will be going over at that time, the smaller city departments, GSET, public safety. I don't know why it says enterprise funded between them, but that's just a typo, I'm sure. Yeah. Not being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
They moved.
In a second.
All right, there we go. All in favor?
Thanks.
Hold it, Stan. All right, this meeting is adjourned as 9:03.